Welcome everyone, today is August 18th. It is 5:00 PM, this is the meaning of the Board of Selectmen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
I am applying to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Church. It stands one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible in justice for all.
Gentlemen, we have some minutes to approve, but they haven't been released in my packet. I don't know if either one of you have minutes in your packet, but I do not.
No.
Roche on the table. Number two.
Second.
People with a favor.
Aight.
And our first honorable business is, old business, on their old business, it's Town Hall reopening plan. And we are pleased to announce that we have Chief Gallagher, our fire chief, with us tonight to discuss some of the updates that he can bring as far as our reopening plans go. And Ms. Hebert will take it from there and give the board a quick update on the reopening plan Phase Two. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, Ms. Hebert, Ms. Leonard up in the chief seats. You have a daunting task before you to reopen the aspects of government that are controlled by the Board of Selectmen, piling ways building town hall and other places as well. And there's been an awful lot of effort that's gone in, cooperative effort among all the departments to gather some information and make some recommendations for the board for your consideration. One aspect, and I know Ms. Hebert will be going into detail with some of the other planks of the plan, is something that we've done at the fire station. We shut down our building to the public and to all but essential personnel. By essential personnel, we determine that to be the full-time staff at Station One. That was a tough decision to make, but we were able to create a bubble and we're very selective of who we allowed into the bubble. The full-timers that did, we did medical screening to make sure that everyone was healthy in order to work. And we were following people over a course of a period of time to determine if they were healthy enough. We've been able to augment that recently with the purchase of a kiosk, a freestanding kind of iPad-looking device that allows for the immediate taking of the temperature of whoever stands before it. And it is a preset trigger that if you are above a certain temperature, and it uses lasers to determine what your temperature is, it'll either shine red or green and allow you admittance. That's been proven to be a very effective tool for our building to allow us to bring the call firefighters back into the building, to resume training, to have them come back after calls where in the past we were just doing everything at the scene simply because we didn't, we weren't able to track everyone's health who may or may not show up on a call. So this one device has proven very beneficial for us just for that initial screening. It doesn't say whether or not you're positive for COVID, doesn't say if you have any of the other symptoms, but fever being in a high temperature being one of the initial symptoms of COVID-19, we found a lot of value in that piece of equipment. So we have it at the fire station, we're currently using it. We invite you gentlemen to stop by and take a look at it. And I believe it's part of Ms. Hebert's comments in a few minutes, so.
Excellent.
Alright.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
If you want, if you want, you can stay at the podium for any other discussion and stop.
Alrighty.
Ms. Hebert?
So what you have before you is a proposal for Phase Two of the reopening plan. Just to recap what we've already done so far, since I'm not sure we've mentioned it at other meetings, right now the doors are closed to the public, but recently we've opened up the walk-up window for the treasure collector's office, which I believe has been a great success. We have limited hours, they are from 9:00 AM to noon, Monday to Thursday, and additional hours on Tuesday nights from 4:00 to 6:00. So if anyone wants to come and make a payment, get a receipt, come to the, just walk up the ramp and you'll see the window right there where the treasurer's office, about that way masks are acquired. So this Phase Two proposal is before you whenever you want to enact it or if you want to make changes to it. But essentially, we're looking at maintaining the flow of people who are going into the building. Other towns have looked at hiring a person to kind of sit and maintain the flow, but you know, Jim and a lot of the other department heads have worked really hard on coming up with a proposal where we don't need to have that person. We've looked at using the Ring doorbell system, which is great because it has the video feed and you can communicate back and forth with people. And it also has a special feature where you can lock and unlock a door. So we're looking at having, you know, say here at Town Hall, you can walk in, the lobby door will be open, but the door to go through the hall will be locked. There'll be a Ring doorbell for each of the pertinent offices there, so if you want the assessors, you ring their bell, they'll talk to you and say, you know, hey, you up here for an abatement, I'd like to come in if there's nobody else in the office and it's safe for them to enter. Again, we'll have the temperature kiosk if it's approved, so they can see on the video that the person has no fever, they can push a button and it'll essentially buzz the person into the building so they can safely walk up and go into the office. And in addition, we'll have, you know, in the proposal, we have other features, basics, markings on the floor to show people where they can walk. If there is capacity, parting ways has a lot more space in the halls if they can't allow people to kind of wait in line, you know, having a six-foot distance, it'll be all marked on the floors. Masks are obviously required, you've brought that up, Chairman, many times.
I hope.
That's kind of the big piece of Phase Two. The other part that's mentioned here is in relation to public meetings, public hearings, really pushing that they should be virtual because, as you know, last week it went into effect, the limit on the amount of people who can gather in an indoor setting was lowered. And it's really caused a problem for us, you know, even having the schools, we're losing the schools soon, but even having them, we're still limited to that giant space of 25 people. So part of this is also looking at how can we facilitate giant hearings effectively without the schools and with this limitation, and it really comes down to remote meetings. We've worked with cable and I think, you know, I've talked to Nick a little bit as well to get the settings on our Zoom updated so that we can have an effective hearing where, you know, everybody who joins is muted, there's the button at the bottom, so if you want to participate, you can click and raise your hand. The chair or whoever is managing the meeting would be able to see who's raising their hand and unmute them to ask questions and facilitate a nice meeting that way. I think it's going to be important going forward because it doesn't seem like this is changing and winter's coming and we're losing any outdoor seating or arrangements that we may have. So that's another big piece of this is really pushing to have public hearings and meetings that exceed the capacity virtual, so there's a basis for you.
Mr. Doros. I have one question, these temperature iPads, how long do they take to get? Was there, is there, when you purchased them, was it something that two, three weeks, four weeks?
It was just a matter of days.
There are days.
And I believe the school has ordered several as well.
Okay.
For their facility. I failed to mention that one of the, we haven't gotten to this level yet, but we will. The iPad interacts with software that could be set up on a desktop. And that has facial recognition software in there so that you can put photos of Town Hall staff and as they check in, their temperature is recorded against their file and you're able to track their temperature over a course of a week or two weeks. So there's a lot of bells and whistles that right now is a little bit beyond my need just to know whether or not somebody coming in has a temperature or not. We'll get there, we just haven't really scratched the surface yet of the equipment.
Because I only ask if we're going to implement Phase Two and it takes a month to get these things, then we couldn't implement for over a month, so.
I understand, turn around, time's fairly quick, but.
We're going to have a discussion, yeah, and that's why I asked the chief to stay because we got some CARE Act grant discussion that'll have, that's why I asked you to stay, stay at the podium, Chief. So with that, Ms. Hebert, I think you defined it pretty well, what we have here, gentlemen, is the reopening plan. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hebert and the staff or Mr. Marra especially for opening up what I call our Burger King drive-through window for our collector's office. I was here a week ago, two weeks ago, and we had a lot of people that were out there, they were all doing, wearing their mask, they were all standing six feet apart, and I think they were all very happy that they could speak to somebody in the collector's office, pay their bill, get a receipt. So the feedback was very positive just from opening up that window compared to where we were before, so it's great work on behalf of our employees and the staff. And again, it's COVID-19, it's a pandemic, it's very difficult to try to move forward with this and make everybody happy, but we're doing the best we can with the circumstance that we were dealt with. So Chief, I know that there's a plan in here. With that being said, I can go to new business, number two is the CARE Grant discussion. You have some kiosks there inside of, so gentlemen, if you go to that.
Mr. Chairman, if you can go, just a couple of things I'd like to say for the record for the plan. Julie, thank you for putting this together. And at our last meeting, we voted on rearranging the Town Hall hours back to the way they used to be with a more streamlined eight to four. But I think one of the things that's really important is that we have the ability to be flexible, empower department heads to make good decisions. I think the name, you know, at the end of the day is, we're striving for coverage for our taxpayers. But you know, one thing I think the board should really think about is really, you know, empowering the department heads to recognize what some of the challenges that the employees may have, you know, especially with going back to school with different programs and different school districts doing different things, is that if we're able to provide coverage without going dark at any time during the day, then I think that's something we should at least consider moving forward. And then, you know, again, we'll vote on it at our next meeting. But I think with Dr. Bailey being here, it's a real opportunity for us to show a unified front when it comes to openings, you know, while maybe symbolic in nature, but consider coordinating with our school department to show the community that we're all on the same page, you know, and I just think that sends a good message and is worth the effort to consider. So, you know, I encourage you, Dr. Bailey, to communicate with Julie on that and just something for us to think about moving forward. I think those little symbolic things are crucial at this time. And the last thing I'm going to say, I'm not totally down on Zoom. I think if anything, this might present an opportunity for people who might not get involved in town government because you know what, I can't make it on a Tuesday night at seven to be on a committee. But essentially with Zoom, you can conduct your meetings at any time of the day, right? And you know, especially some of these smaller committees that may not have big dollars tied to them, like for instance, the Lake Street Committee. You know, it's a fun thing, we've got a lot of work and people want to do that. I plan on doing a bunch of meetings by Zoom, could be a Saturday morning, could be a Sunday afternoon, whatever it may be, as long as, I think, could be a unique opportunity to bring some fresh blood into the town and give people an opportunity to start physically be in this building to conduct business. I think that's an antiquated way of doing things, and maybe the Zoom thing could be a positive for some of these, you know, less high-profile committees, so we'll leave it at that.
I see you would agree that we've been pretty generous with employees doing certain things and times they need to leave and things of that nature for our closure and everything else. So I think the board in the past has taken that step for department heads to offer them the flexibility to kind of maneuver and making sure that the staff has been covered and, you know, on dock, as Mr. Warner has alluded to. So I think we've done that pretty well thus far. I don't think anybody can really complain about that, so hopefully moving forward, we'll continue that. And again, as Mr. Warner stated, school season is back in session, so for those who do have children in school, it may be a little more difficult to get a year on time at eight o'clock in the morning and things of that nature, so the board's very flexible as far as that goes with people with children. With that said, Chief, I noticed there was a very large expense on some of the possible department heads and it says, I understand why, it says Town/School, it says weekly testing, it's obviously the kiosk. I think a lot of that's kiosk.
No, testing separate.
Oh, that's a separate than the kiosk?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have two things. I didn't see, do you have the kiosk things in here? Everything's so small.
Yeah, printed, I mean, nobody can read it, I mean, I'm having difficult time, you even put glasses on, but I don't see EMA building.
It's in the middle, it's under, library has a request for one police and then town buildings.
Temperature check, temperature check, temperature check.
Yeah.
So given that it's seven, three, ten, it's somewhere around the 13, $14,000 mark?
Twelve, six.
Somewhere around the 13, so I was giving you a little extra, I always kind of round up on it, so this is part of the CARES Act money. That would give us roughly, what is the expense for one kiosk?
I believe it's seventeen, seventeen hundred.
So roughly six, oh, six kiosks, one for each building is what we're proposing.
So Ms. Hebert's has been writing point on this from the, from the different departments.
So there was one request, a request for one from the library, two for the police, they would want one for the front where people are and one for staff. And then we had four for town buildings, potentially two at each building. But COA also had one, it's not separated, but it was within their overall grouping, the various ITF groups, they listed it there. So I think, you know, everybody, we had a great department end meeting where the chief had it open and people got to test it and everyone really liked it, so pretty much all the department heads had asked for one for their buildings.
And it's important to know that the schools did the procurement check, the mandatory procurement requirements.
Yep.
So as far as, Ms. Bailey, if I could ask you that question now, as far as the schools concerned, because I hate to order six or seven, and then I'd rather just do a bulk order and maybe we can get better pricing on it. The chief, you could probably look into it, see how you order from the company, maybe if you buy more than five, you'll get a little bit discount, if you buy more than 10, you get a better discount, that's usually the way it works. Are you all set from the school's point of view?
I believe we ordered eight.
Okay.
But Ms. Flynn will be able to definitely talk about that when she comes to the meeting.
So you did, you did already order some, so Chief, it's basically just make sure that we have to write them out?
Sure.
Before we put an order in, if it's six, it's six, if it's seven, it's seven, there's the board. I'd like to get a motion now to endorse that expenditure now and get the chief moving on it. If we're going to talk about reopening plans, gentlemen, you think it's a good idea to do this? And make a motion to approve the purchase of X amount of kiosks, you know, whether it be six, seven, it doesn't matter.
Enough for each building?
Enough for each building or whatever we need, yeah, because we got two for the police department, so whatever, whatever we need to order for the kiosk, we can do it from the CARES Act money. We have this money in there that was given from the state, so everybody at home understands this CARES Act money, the state has given, the town of Ucushnet, somewhere around eight fifty, nine hundred?
Nine hundred and thirty thousand was the original money.
CARES Act money, so it's basically grants, one-time expenditures that is. So Chief, with that said, the board, is there a motion to approve such an expenditure for the kiosk, temperature kiosk?
And a second?
All those in favor?
Aight.
Chief, you got the green light?
I'll work with you to get the final number.
Sure. And we got eight budgeted, yeah.
Yep.
Whatever it is, if it's eight, it's eight, if it's 10, it's 10, it is what it is. I think it's a great idea and thank you, Chief, for looking into that for us. I think it's great that we have that for our employees and the public.
Julie, is this a good segue to the other topic?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, Chief, you can, you can go right into the testing part of it, because I know you want to talk about COVID-19 testing for schools.
The, so as you probably know, Wednesday is a very important day, the Department of Public Health releases information on what they're tracking by community for the last two weeks. And Boston, the governor today released an interactive map that can be found on the DPH website, you can touch a Cushinget and it'll show you all the data. So last Wednesday, it was reported that in the last 14 days, 242 tests of residents from Cushinget was taken and three had come back positive. That's an extremely good number, we seem to be doing something right, the community that is, and more importantly, the residents. And the color coding goes from white to green to yellow to red, you don't want to be red, you want to be white, and that's where we are now. But just to tell you how fluid this is, been working extremely closely with Mr. Korea from the Board of Health, we have three, we've been notified by the state this week, and it's only Tuesday, of three additional cases. So, you know, it's still very much an issue, it's still here in town, we're getting these notifications slowly, but for the previous two weeks, three, and it looks as if that number will be met if not exceeded in the upcoming report. Which brings me to this topic, this is, and if I, if I just may, I've got 34 years under my belt working for this town, and never before have I experienced a level of cooperation on a daily basis between all the departments. No one should question whether or not all wars are in the water rowing in the same direction. I've never talked to a superintendent of schools as much as I have Dr. Bailey, Joe Korea is turning into a brother, we're on the phone constantly, with Julie and the police chief, council on aging, everyone is brainstorming to see how we can effectively move forward. And there is, there has been kind of missing from our local plan simply because it was never really on our radar before, and that's community testing, providing tests here in the community. Instead of having a resident go to their primary care physician or to a clinic or to New Bedford to take advantage of the free testing that the state is putting on, but they won't come to a Cushinget, I just had to add that editorial comment. It's for all of your reopening plans, for the schools and for the town facilities, to have capabilities to conduct diagnostic testing, the nasal swab molecular test where, you know, mucus is extracted from the nasal cavity, sent off to a lab, they check for the DNA of the virus and a verdict comes back. So we've been working diligently the last few weeks in trying to put together a plan to present to you that's going to require funding from, from a source, and that's for you gentlemen to decide if you, if you want to move forward with this. But Dr. Bailey has talked about her reopening plan, the school department's reopening plan, and you know, the details are out there, but we can imagine a scenario where a possible exposure by someone in one of the classroom cohorts requires them to go home and to be tested. So in essence, what you have is 12 students and two or three staff members, so 15 families completely upended with the notice that their child needs to come home on their day themselves, the adult needs to go home, and secure testing. So you have 15 different people reaching out, families reaching out to primary care physicians, to pediatricians, looking for a clinic, all of them using different laboratories that have different response times. So there's a potential mess out there in getting the information back that would allow the school to then decide, does the student come back to class, does the employee come back to work? So we are presenting tonight, and again, this is a cooperative effort of all your departments, a plan to utilize your EMTs who are allowed under the regulations, it's within their scope of practice, to do that type of invasive procedure medically. Secure the services of a lab, and we've been working with a private ambulance company out of the New Bedford area, that, the New Bedford South Coast, Rhode Island, that has been the leader, is alert ambulance, they've been the leader of providing COVID testing to the state of Rhode Island, they do all the nursing homes there, they're picking up private contracts with private vendors to test their employees in the South Coast area as well. And we've been working with one of their vendors and we were able to secure a price per test that reflects what they're getting on a much larger volume. So we're kind of attaching our wagon to their, to their lab services. So what would happen? Let's play this out, in the school or here in Town Hall, if an employee or if a resident came in and was later found to be positive, you will have upheaval, right? We experienced that in the fire department when, when one of our employees tested positive. And there will be confusion and there will be fear, but we would be in a position, if this project goes forward, to respond here immediately or to the school or to wherever we are asked to go with staff that's trained on collecting the specimen. The test kit, a courier would be dispatched to a Cushinget to pick up those test kits and deliver them to the lab, and within 24 to 36 hours, the results are sent to a web-based portal where the individual is receiving the results, where medical control, and that's an aspect to this plan, we can't just do this willy-nilly, we have to be working under the guidance of a physician, and we've lined that up. If you gentlemen are agreeable to this, we already have a physician who's our EMS medical director willing to extend himself and take this project on because he knows of our collective interest in public health here in town. So the results are made available, in the event that the test result is positive, the doctor then reaches out to the individual to guide them. And most importantly, from a public health perspective, the notification of those three positive cases that we've received over the last two days, those test results were probably shared with the state last week. There's a delay, Joe will talk to you about Maven, which is their, their database where all the results go in and they get correlated, and eventually the positive cases are sent down to local boards of health, but there's a delay in that. Under this plan, the Board of Health would be notified as soon as the individual is notified that they've tested positive, so that nurses could then start the contact tracing immediately and not lose those three, four, maybe five days, and you're controlling the spread of the virus that way. So this is, this is, I believe, an important component of any reopening plan, and I've been talking with Dr. Bailey, she, she can envision multiple scenarios where an incident occurs at the school, you then turn to the guidance provided by the Commonwealth and they'll work their way through those, that algorithm and protocols, but they'll get to the point where they need testing. And through the CARES Act, we have a funding available, through our staff, we have the staffing, we've got a great deal on a contract with a lab, we've got medical control all lined up, so all the components are there. Now, it's not cheap, $75 per test, but for that, we receive the test kit, the courier who shows up at the end of the day, and then, you know, off it goes to the lab, then we have the mechanism by which the information is then shared with town officials. I've done quite a bit of research on this and the average cost for a molecular test is $100. I think, and I'm a little nervous that this is going out over cable, but I think we've got a sweetheart deal because we, we were able to kind of use our affiliation with the private ambulance company to, to open the door to this. So in essence, we would have a incident response team ready to go, be it Town Hall, be it DPW, the police department, Chief Richmond's been involved in this and he is thrilled by the idea of, instead of what happened to him last time where he's calling, calling in favors at the hospital to try to get one of his folks to the front of the line so that we can get them back to work quickly, we would have the ability to just move right in there, get the folks tested, and never mind just the student, but the student's parents, their siblings, anyone else who may have been exposed in order to contain those numbers. So this is not in your, I don't believe this is in their briefing book, it's something that we've literally been working on right up till 3:30 today to put it together. So what I'm asking is consideration, if you give us the green light, I'm confident that we can make this work. We've been in touch with officials at the Faven Fire Department to back us up in the event that we have the need for more trained medics to come in to do the testing based on what the incident is or however this plays out, we would do the same with them, provide mutual aid, if you will, for, for COVID testing. So I think we've checked all the boxes to be able to come to you today and say that in our collective opinion, this is a solid plan, this is something that's missing from the community. This is something that's missing from the community, and it's something that really is key to successful reopenings of both the school, town buildings, and the like.
Gentlemen? Chairman, I think it's, I think it's an outside-the-box idea. If you look at the entities that have done integration successfully, you look at the NBA, they have testing. Professional sports leagues, you've got some who aren't doing it very well, Major League Baseball, but if you look at some of these entities that are doing testing or providing that opportunity, if anything, it, it shows people that, you know, maybe takes a look around the fear factor out of it. So I'm on board. You know, I'd like to see a little more, conceptually, to go forward with the plan, and maybe report back to the board, we don't want to slow things down. But I would ask Dr. Bailey that you work it through your school committee, and make sure that, you know, they're on board as well, that we can provide the opportunity. And, you know, kind of view this as town hall, school is phase one, and see how that goes, and if it works well, then maybe you extend it to our most vulnerable population in town, our elders, you know, presidential terrorists, Council on Aging, see where that plays out, and then, you know, maybe you expand it to, to any resident who might feel that they're coming down with something. But I think the schools and town hall, our town employees should be our number-one priority right now, because they're the most exposed. I'm on board.
And, you know, we would need time to crawl before we walk, and walk before we run. So this, this would be a new endeavor for us. There's not a model of a community providing this, so we'd be kind of inventing this as we go along, but I'm confident that, that we'd be able to do it. And one of the things that Dr. Bailey just pointed out is, you know, the, the saving of lost employee time. Now, if a, for an example, and I'll be careful not to disclose, but there is a department in town that has two employees that would notify that someone they were with socially tested positive, and it took those employees four days to secure testing. That's four lost days at work, where we could have rolled in immediately, got the test, and twenty-four to thirty-six hours later, the decision is, you know, they're getting the final word. So, you know, from a management point of view, to be able to turn around that downtime and get people back to work, students back to school, or, if they test positive, off to definitive care, which is hugely important. Ensuring, I'm anticipating some of the questions that you may have. Insurance is not a player in this. Private insurance and government insurance will not pay for testing if you are asymptomatic. If you have a symptom and you go to your primary care physician and he or she orders a test, insurance companies of varying degrees will pick up that expense. But as a diagnostic tool, insurance company doesn't pick that up.
Chief, on the test, the actual test itself, I've had a test, and it was the non-intrusive nasal swab test, where they just do a circular motion in, in the nasal?
Yep.
And then there's the other one where they make it, it's very invasive, right? And it feels like they're in your throat.
Right.
I've heard of people having that one earlier on, when COVID-19.
Right.
This is just the non-invasive, where they go in and just do the-
We, we would be arranging for training of our folks, and from what I understand, the skill session includes mannequins, and I believe that the intrusion is pretty deep. Those are the tests that, that we've all undergone when, when we had an exposure.
So it's the deep nasal?
It's the deep nasal, yeah. Yeah, it can be modified, you know, if there's a kindergarten student that needs it, you know, we, there's different modifications that can be done, but I believe as what, you have to have, from what I understand, a saturated swab of mucus, nasal mucus, nasal pharyngeal airway, and that requires going back fairly deep. So, it's one of those where it's cringe-worthy, as you know, Mr. Chairman, thinking about it, it's cringe-worthy when it's happening, and you're just thanking your lucky stars when it's done.
Yeah, there's just multiple tests out there. I mean, they got saliva test now and everything else. I just didn't know if there was a special requirement for it to be that test, the intrusive versus the internal nasal swab. That's what the hospital, doctor's office was doing, is you just come in, and you have to accept an appointment. This is the time you come in, you wait in line, and you go in, they put it in a little bag, and send it off.
We haven't gotten to the weeds that deeply with the lab yet, as, you know, the, the mechanics of it. We've been kind of ranging the big picture items. But there are multiple tests. We just, we trialed a, a finger stick with a drop of blood in a small little tray, and it tests the antibodies in your body, as to whether or not you've built up any antibodies because you've been exposed. That's great for being able to tell where you've been, but it doesn't tell you where you are currently. And just as a disclaimer, four of us practiced on each other on Friday, just to make sure that we were able to, you know, conduct the test, and all four of us came back negative, including the employee that had COVID. So, his should have glowed, and it didn't. So, there are some concerns about the efficacy of those tests.
I know. Just concerns about everything that's going on with COVID-19. I mean, no matter, no matter how great of a plan you think you have, there's a flaw in the plan, right? We can only do, so as far as Ms. Bailey goes, as far as the school goes, and, and the student, if it were to be a student or faculty, they have an opt-in or opt-out?
Absolutely.
They don't have to do this via the town, they can choose to opt-out and go to their own-
And they can quarantine for the whole time, versus getting a test result where they can come back to school or work sooner.
So this is-
They have to be quarantined.
There's an option.
Yep.
Mr. DeRosa, you have anything?
Well, I'm open to the idea. I mean, speeding up the process to get the test results from four to six days to, to twenty-four to thirty-six hours is very, very promising, and getting the money, because money's going to be coming from the CARES Act.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the implementation, of course, I have questions and start thinking and multiplying, well, if this kid gets it, and the teacher, and how it's all going to play out, but I think having, you know, having the testing available and being able to speed up the process is a very important part of it.
So, Chairman, with all that in consideration, we could make a motion to ask the chief to go forward with developing a plan and report back to the board.
Certainly, we'll get it written-
Take into account, you know, how the school will handle it, how town hall, you know, we can bring in the school nurse- Whatever, you know, the meat on the bone, so we can have a handling. In the meantime, if you have individual questions, we can filter those to the chief before the, before the visual learning, so-
Mr. Wong, I took notes on the phases. So, maybe as an addendum to that report, we could explore possible phased-in expansion of this project, you know, once we kind of get it going, and hopefully get some very good successes.
Mr. Heba?
And if I can too, we'll work on our cost estimate, because I know you didn't get this plan, because again, Chief has been fine-tuning it like crazy. So what you do have in here, in your, in your packets, was an original estimate, that we plugged in a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That was the original plan, it's been, it's been fine-tuned since then, so we'll work on an estimate, because going along with this, we're using CARES money, so, you know, I know you all are tasked with how do we spend that money down, and we'll want to make sure we have something that's reasonable for you guys.
The idea is not to use any of the testing money. Think about it. You don't want anybody to have it, right? This is just a precautionary measure that we're going to take, be proactive towards COVID-19 and the reopening of the schools and town hall and things of that nature, that if we were to come across a case, we have the tools in place to do the testing ourselves and expedite that test, in, in the relief, quite honestly, to the family of a child, if it happens to be a child, to give some security in their mind, saying, "My child's okay, and I don't have to worry about it." I'm sure that the school's got protocols in place where if your son sneezes, or your daughter sneezes, your child is sneezing, coughing, itching, headache relief medicine type thing, don't bring them to school, don't allow them to come to school, and things of that nature, but we always know that that could still slip by, because you don't, quite honestly, don't have to show any symptoms of anything, and you could have it, as you said, asymptomatic, right? It could still be a passer of the COVID, the pandemic. So, it's a tricky thing, something for us to think about, and that's, Mr. Wong, I slipped, and Wong, I stated, get a better plan, put it in, in, you know, a hundred and fifty-six, I mean, it's seventy-five bucks a test, it's only gonna, we'll, we'll be capable of testing so many people that we already know that, what is the seventy-five divided into the one fifty-six that allows us, you know, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred tests, whatever that number comes out to? And obviously, hopefully, we'll be nowhere near that, but, you know, again, as the phases of the CARES Act comes out, hopefully we'll be okay, and we won't have to do too much. But with the schools, it's going to be pretty tricky, because I talked to Ms. Heba this afternoon about that testing thing, and I said, "It's tough, because if you have a class of ten, and you have a school teacher, whoever else that kid came in contact with, that child may have came in contact with, right?" And then there's a school bus that's transporting them too, so it's not only the kid that's in that classroom, and those ten kids on that day that that kid's, you also got to look at everybody that's on that school bus, and then their families as well. So it could escalate the problem and the testing requirements associated with one case, you could be a fifty, sixty tests.
So I'm looking at this, gentlemen, similar to your fire department. We, we invest millions of dollars in apparatus and training, we hope that we never use it. And we could put together a plan for you, acquire the, the assets, have people trained, we don't want to use it, but in the event that there's a situation, we'll be able to, you know, get in here, get into the site, do the testing, get the results back, and attempt, hopefully, to get that family, that employee, you know, back to normal.
Here's, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, here's my prediction. I think based on your track record, your, you know, your career doing things like this, the capabilities of the school department, I'm going to make a prediction that this will become a model program for other communities, and will get the attention of the state, and then eventually, some type of testing mechanism for municipalities will be something of the norm. So, I wish you luck, and I'm supportive of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, seventy-five dollars a pop, that gives us about twenty-one hundred tests.
For that.
For budget.
We have-
That's fine.
Yeah, it's a lot of tests.
I'm sure the chief, now, now the chief knows the board is somewhat endorsing this plan.
Sure.
You know, I guess we're endorsing it, we just want a little more defined plan in front of us, other than just a, a number-
Right.
Associated with-
It's a bit of that documentation, the chain of command, how it would all go through, and all that, stuff like that, so. Very good.
It's great.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
That's all the time I can give you today?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for coming in. Appreciate it. Okay, gentlemen, we're going backwards now, we have the school department. I'm trying to find the agenda, floating around here. School update from Kristen Flynn and Dr. Paula Bailey, fiscal year twenty, end of year, and conversation with MSBA funding, and that would be for the school grant, is Ms. Flynn, is Ms. Flynn? Hi, Ms. Flynn.
Hello.
So the first item on the agenda is, again, the school update, fiscal year, end of the year, and the MSP funding for the school roof, so whoever wants to lead that conversation off.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm sorry, one thing, there's somebody outside, I see.
Oh, is it Sarah? I just wanted to look to see if I saw-
I was gonna say, maybe we just put a chair out there, if somebody's sitting, you know, kind of stand up, if there's somebody's in the, you know, the on-site.
I just wanted to let the station know. I think she can sit there.
Ms.-
Yeah, Sarah, you just broke Sarah.
Thank you, Ms. Gomes. Okay, Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
You can begin.
Okay. What would you like to discuss first, Mr. Gaspar?
Well, it's on the agenda for a fiscal year twenty, end of year. I guess we were talking in the previous school year, we talked a little bit about the transportation line item, and then, you know, maybe we'd have some funding left over for that, money left over out of that budget and things of that nature, to help us out with the school roofs and just general turnbacks, and I know that we have an expense sheet here that nobody can see, because of print so fine on it.
There's a lot of expenditures.
Yeah, I, you know, we don't have to go through them all, Ms. Flynn, we don't have time for that.
Okay.
I guess you could just kind of carry us through the bulk of, you know, the amount of money that you had left over, I guess. I know that there's like four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So on-
That's been expended.
Correct.
One miscellaneous charges, I mean, we don't really have to get into the gist of it, I know that some of those may be COVID-related, that we can-
That's correct.
Do a little bit of this and a little bit of that with as well, so we'll work with you as we move forward through the CARES Act money, we'll figure that out.
Sure. Okay, well, just for some background, as you know, school closed on March thirteenth, and with that time, we were no longer transporting, you mentioned transportation, students to school. However, the Department of Education advised school departments that they need to work with their transportation providers to provide for continuity of service, so, and undertake negotiations with their contracted service providers, such as transportation, to make sure that those companies are still thriving, alive, and in business, and ready to go when we're ready to go. So, over the course of a few months, we negotiated with our bus company, and we settled on a payment that is still yet to be finalized, but with that, by the end of June, we knew what we did not need to pay the bus company, in other words. So there was some, as you said, some transportation surplus, and we did have some significant expenditures throughout that time. You know, most businesses, the coronavirus hit, and maybe they didn't incur a lot of expenditures. However, the school department, we still, like the town hall, still had employees on the payroll. We had employees who we paid from revolving funds, such as school lunch and preschool tuition, that those were revenue-generating funds, that were no longer generating revenue at that point in time, so we needed to cover that through the school budget. We also had some deficits in special education transportation, special education tuition, and high school tuition. So any, any surpluses that we had through salaries and through transportation had to first cover those deficits, okay? And then, we went through the course of April, May, and June, just waiting to figure out what we were going to owe our transportation companies. And keep in mind, we still had to continue payment to our out-of-district placements, because those students were learning remotely, and the Department of Ed advised that we needed to continue to pay for our placements, our collaboratives, so we still had those expenditures. So unlike some businesses, we didn't just shut the door and stop spending money. And we also knew that, at this point in time, it's now March, it's April, May, and June, we submitted a budget to the town in February and March, remember, we had our budget discussions, and we had to undertake a lot of budget cuts to get to the number that we were happy that the town could provide, which was an increase, which we were, you know, happy that the town was able to increase our budget going into next year. However, with the budget being set in January, February, and March, and having to make those cuts, which included level funding all supply lines, so all discretionary line items in the school department budget were level funded. And as you may or may not have, you know, learned over the years, that those are the lines that we frequently have to transfer money in, because our, what we set the budget for is not sufficient for what the actual cost is. But in the whole budget process, trying to come to a number that's going to be suitable for the town and the school department, we can't cut salaries, we can't cut, unless we cut, unless we cut positions, we can't cut our contracted service providers, which is our transportation and our tuition, so all that's left is supplies. So we were in a situation in, in the springtime, that we had a budget that we level funded all of our expenditures. We also had to lay off three positions in order to get to that number, so we're already down three paraprofessionals heading into the new school year, in addition to some other cuts that we had to make. So we knew at that point that we had no funds to be able to prepare for the new school year. And at that point, no one knew what was going to happen with the school year, and quite honestly, I think we all thought that we would be going back to school, maybe under some conditions, but that would be, we'd be going back to school, and this would be in the past, right? So, as the spring went on, it became quite evident that there were going to be some things that we would need to purchase, and also some things that we would need to prepare for in order to go back to school. The Department of Ed continually released guidelines that suggested that we needed to prepare to buy masks. At first, it was a mask, one disposable mask per day, per student and staff member. So that, had we been, had we had to do that, that would have been for three months, fifty thousand dollars in masks. Department of Ed rolled that back, and we rolled back that. So we had to buy that. We had to buy hand sanitizer to make sure that our supplies were replaced. We had nothing practically going into March thirteenth, and so we needed to purchase that. So, if you see on this sheet that I gave you, that has the, the small print, like I said, there's a lot of expenditures on here, if you have any questions, I'd be certainly, you know, happy to answer them for you. So, what I did, the one that I have for you, is I sorted it by budget item, and we also have a column that says whether it was COVID-19 purchase or not. Now, the total that was spent, and I did include some purchases that were made before March, and I wanted you to be able to see that there were some things that were unexpected expenditures, that were not budgeted for, but yet we had to pay for, be prior to that. One of them is, you know, if you remember last fall, our biggest issue was triple E. So, we spent about seventy- So we spent, um, about seventy, a hundred dollars spraying the grounds for that. We also had some other repairs. We were without a maintenance employee for three months. So we needed to outsource some electrical and plumbing work and some heating and ventilation work. So if you can see from those expenditures, if you look under the second column, facilities. Forty-five thousand was spent on HVAC related expenditures. And that was in our control system, the automatic control system, which you'll see the vendor was stellar. FWW, um, also for some.
Where are you, Ms. Flynn?
Second page.
It says facilities expenditures, but we don't have a breakout number like you just read.
No, I made some notes, so that's what I'm telling you.
Cause I got a total curriculum expenditures here.
Yep.
Yeah, so you just broke your, your.
So I'm taking the facilities expenditures. Yes, and I'm just letting you know, all those facilities expenditures. And these are ones that weren't directly related to COVID nineteen, yet they were unexpected expenditures that we nevertheless had to. Expend and affected our, our bottom line. So. So like I said, we had some outsourcing of some, uh, electrical and plumbing work when, and also some outsourcing of some heating, uh, work. Uh, you know, typically our in-house person might change out some motors and some belts and actuators. We didn't have someone like that in January, February and March, and that's the primetime heating season. So we needed to outsource that. Um, so you'll see some of those expenditures, um.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of your expenditures on one of the pages. Actually, I would say eighty percent of it's HVAC.
Yes, so that was forty-five thousand.
A few different companies, uh huh.
Right, yes. So one was the controls, the, um, the automated controls, which allow us through the computer. To look at all of the classrooms and set the, um, set the, the airflow and set the temperature and try to maintain an efficient system.
That's fine.
Um, and there's also expenditures for the mechanical part, which is advanced air and heat that came and did a lot of service calls. And you also see Lemieux Heating and that's work on our twenty-year-old boilers. So. Those are, um, coming to the end of their lifeline. So just a little bit of a, um, of a preview as to what may come in the future. Um, we continue to spend more money maintaining our boilers. So you also see under facilities expenditures, um. We did some tiling in some classrooms that the tiles were all broken up and lifting up. That was a safety hazard, so we had to do that. Um, and then you'll also see a lot of expenditures if you go down, you know, to closer to the bottom under next gen supply group. This is all a lot of the PPE, the hand sanitizers, the. Wipes, the cleaning supplies we purchased.
I think those are self-explanatory, Ms. Flynn. You don't have to, you don't have to take up too much.
Well, I know that you were, you know, concerned about our expenditures, so I wanted to explain that.
I mean, I, it's tough to see some of the stuff.
Sure.
I, I couldn't believe, I, I just did a quick number and I was like thirty-four. I, you said a higher number and I didn't add up all the line items, but I was. Thirty-four thousand dollars in masks and I was like, wow.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of money in masks.
Absolutely.
That's crazy.
It is crazy and I thought the same thing too, Mr. Gaspar, um.
Is that, are they the blue ones like?
Yeah, the disposable.
Yeah.
Just to kind of throw away ones?
So just to give some context to that, because I thought that was a lot of money too, was in disposable masks. And we can get them at a pretty good price using the state contract, um, with our vendor. So just, this is what the Department of Ed advised us back in, on June fifth, that. And keep in mind, we didn't know if everybody was going to be back in school a hundred percent of the time, fifty percent of the time or not. So. A twelve-week supply for our level of students, our number of students, we have a thousand students roughly in our buildings. Was twelve thousand masks for twelve weeks, okay? Then they advised that they wanted, and that was one disposable mask per week per student. Cause students are told to bring in a mask from home, but of course we have to have some on hand, right? So teachers and staff, the Department of Ed, this isn't us saying this. Said you need to purchase five disposable masks per week per teacher, okay? So we have, and that includes all staff too, so that we have roughly a hundred and forty staff members without substitutes, okay? So this is just for a twelve-week period because they're thinking maybe this will get us to Thanksgiving, right? So that's exactly what we did. Um, and then school nurses and other health providers, they advise ten disposable masks per week per school nurse. So those are just some of the things and we're just a small town with two schools. So you can imagine what the school departments all over the Commonwealth are expending on paper masks. It seems unbelievable and I, you know, thought that was a lot of money myself, but that's why I wanted to bring this, to give some context. Because I thought that might be, you know, something that caught people's attention because that is a lot of money.
So not to inter, not to interrupt you because I, I, I get it. I, I, I look at the, the list. I mean, some of it, it is, it is what it is, right? I mean, you have to go out and prepare for the next year's school opening. We get it. And so some of this stuff that we could probably get reimbursed from the CARES Act.
Correct, so that's.
Money that's available.
Yeah, so that's why I mean, other set of, um, sheets that I sent over. It's, uh, potential expenditures for the CARES Act and all those.
That came today, Kristen?
Yes, that's correct. I updated it.
Yeah, the board hasn't reviewed that though.
Where, there was some that I sent last week and it's updated it.
Yep, okay.
I did do that. I did include all the, the year-end expenditures on this that you see marked COVID nineteen. Those all appear on the potential for reimbursement because I thought, I don't know how, yes, I don't know how all that works.
Okay.
But I thought it would be helpful to whomever is filing for it in the town to know that this money was spent, you know, if, if we're looking for.
So you've taken expenditures that you had from the year-end fiscal year budget.
Yep.
That's in here, like, let's just use the mask and like the, uh, touchless faucets.
Yep, the touchless faucet.
Great idea. Great idea though, I mean.
I have to give credit to our new maintenance person, Steve Willet.
I don't understand why everyone don't have one nowadays, right? Don't have to touch things that have been touching. Cause if you think about it, you touch it, you wash it and you touch it again and then you walk out the door.
Correct. So we have.
So you've taken everything that's in here, COVID nineteen related, that you expended your fiscal year twenty budget on.
Yes.
And you've translated it over here for potential reimbursements in a new spreadsheet you've given us already?
Correct.
Okay, good, great.
So, and also on that spreadsheet, I, I don't know if you had any other questions on year-end. You can see we did spend about fifty-three thousand on curriculum and this is digital curriculum because every, I think when I was upstairs, I heard some talk of digital curriculum perhaps.
No.
But all of our students are, um, you know, going to be.
You have voices in your head.
Maybe I do. You know, when, when you're listening to it all day long, it just.
I know, I know, trust me.
Right?
Especially when you're on those meetings and everybody's kind of throwing all these different things.
I know.
I did, I did see some curriculum things on it, Kristen. It's not the year of the year.
That was long overdue, updating the curriculum and also it's going to be very timely because we do, we will have some, you know, remote learning. So this will be, this is a, a great time for this.
So it's safe to say, from what we've been given for our books for today's review, the four hundred and seventy-four thousand. Fiscal year, year-end. I know a big portion of that was COVID related.
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
I know.
Two seventy-three, four, five, seven was COVID of that. So.
You've taken, you've taken that two seventy, let's just call it two seventy and thrown it here.
That's correct.
As a potential reimbursement.
Correct.
So it potentially could free that money up.
That's, I, like I said, I don't know how all that works, but that's, you know, I, I would say an opportunity to, to get some reimbursement, depending on what you decide. I will say however, there is one, um, that I want to direct your attention to on the. The sheet that has the potential reimbursement. If you just give me a minute to get it out.
Kristen, you sent over today?
Yes.
The COVID nineteen.
Actually, I have copies if you need.
The COVID. I just want to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page. The COVID nineteen expenditures for potential reimbursement?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, we can't see it, but go ahead. I'll try to.
Do you want to use this one? Because you might see it better.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's do that.
Landscape. Maybe we can. See this one a little bit better. I was gonna say yours looks like it might be a little bit. Thank you. Yeah, it's a little bit better.
I know, Kevin, I had to miss my eye appointment because of this, so I think this was the year that I might have to get glasses. Not, not sure, but.
You can, you can buy the cheap cheaters, you know, but I'll, I'll, I'll warn you. Buy a, a pair of the one and a half, twos, two and a half and progressively get up.
Cause it goes fast.
The more you wear these. And I don't wear them to like look around, only to look down at things, but I think it makes your eyes worse. Overtime.
Yeah.
It's like the opti grab in, uh, Steve Martin. You guys remember that?
So go ahead, Kristen.
So, okay, so how this is organized is the top section is FY twenty-one expenditures made year-to-date. So we know that school's opening in a few short weeks. So we needed to start preparing ourselves. So we had to make a lot of these expenditures, you know, right out of the gate. One of which was the temperature station that Chief Gallagher was talking about. So we already, I want everyone to know that we already went out and purchased the eight for the school department. And I did the procurement for the school department. I'm not sure if a separate procurement needs to be done for the town. But I, I did the procurement for the eight stations, okay? So you'll see that, um, right at the top, under the expenditures made. You'll see some overtime that we've paid out for, um, any of the hearings that we've had. There's some partitions, you know, I've seen them up in the selectman's office, I think. One thing here, we've rented six of the trailer containers to store furniture. Because in, in the effort to create a lot of distancing in our classroom and spread kids out, we had to store a lot of our furniture. So right now, we filled up five containers and we're waiting the six, which we may even need more than that.
That's monthly too, huh?
Yeah, that's a monthly expense. So there's a pickup and a drop-off and then I believe it's about a hundred and ten dollars per month. So I estimated that for the year through June thirtieth. We started in August, so there's eleven months there for the six containers.
Oh, so this is the full year.
Correct.
On the side, it's confusing. It says monthly rental at eight thousand bucks.
Right, oh, no, 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 no.
I'm calculating the months, but we need to go live before we bring this stuff.
We pay by the month, so it could be less if we.
But that's for, that's for a ten or eleven months. You've already put that number in.
Yep, and then with that, we had to get some movers, um, to, to move all this stuff out. So you'll see the movers.
Sure.
Um, they're coming back next week to finish it off. We, um, have had to do some work on our HVAC systems. All school departments having HVAC assessments and tests done. And so right now, um, the, it's the hourly rate is a hundred and thirty dollars per hour, so roughly a thousand dollars per day. And I estimated about, um, ten days' work and that does include any, um, labor also for any fixes that we need. I know. Just today, um, our maintenance person reported to me that there were some motors that need to be replaced in some of the units. So, um, that number there is just an estimate for the HVAC equipment assessment. It's ongoing. They've been in our buildings for about, uh, I would say about five days so far, um. So you can see we had some additional expenditures for our touchless, um, things, batteries, things like that, classroom packing materials, um. Signs, we have to create a medical isolation room in each building. So. If a student or a staff suspects, is suspected that they have COVID nineteen. They go to a medical isolation room until, especially with a student, until they can leave and be dismissed. So we have to do some modifications to some rooms in the building to adhere to the Department of Ed guidelines for that. So we have some signs. And then under the anticipated expenditures, you're gonna see that I put some money in for modifications made for the two isolation rooms. There's some. Um, building in construction that needs to be done for that. You'll see the temperature check stations, um, also for school lunch, we have to move to online ordering. Um, we have to modify the way we serve school lunch and one of those components is having people order ahead of time. Um, web cameras for our staff. And then you'll also see anticipated expenditures. I did put down some, um, an HVAC assessment with a qualified, state-qualified engineering consultant. We have some requests out for quotes for that right now. Um, I really have no idea how much that's going to cost. I put in about twenty thousand because that's what the. Suggested budget for the number of schools that the state advised was. Um, we have some air purifiers that we will probably likely be purchasing, some more hand sanitizer. Um, the big ones is that are unknown is whether we going, whether we're going to need an additional bus run. Because on the bus now, we are limited to twenty-five students, one student per bench. A bus normally can hold, it's a seventy-seven seat capacity bus. We normally have a load of about fifty students on our highest bus. So we're gonna have to reconsider some of these routes and we're hoping that we do not need to do a double route, you know, to round the kids up, but. Until we know the results from our survey, who's coming to school, who's taking the bus, what cohort they're in. I can't give you any information about that, but we are working with our bus company on that right now. And then the final thing you'll see is under that, that FY twenty expenditures. So that's basically what that first sheet was that I discussed. Plopped right on this second sheet.
Okay.
Okay?
Excellent. That's one question. You do have a line item for ninety-five thousand dollars for additional custodians?
Oh, yes. I'm glad you asked me that. I wanted to talk about that. Um, that's very important. Um. We would like to hire two and a half additional custodians. So how our labor is set up during the day, we have one custodian in each building during the day. And so we anticipate that there's going to obviously be more, um, cleaning work that's needed, right? We're going to have to go around and get all our touch points done several times throughout the day, door handles, um, you know, uh, toilets, cleaning the bathrooms. So doing that several times a day. Our custodian who's in the building during the day will respond to, you know, cleanups, various cleanups, lunch. If we're serving, depending where we're serving lunch, there's going to be more cleanup from that. So, and also we're going to be doing some deeper cleaning at night than we typically do. So we would envision that we could have someone overlap the shifts, come into support during the day to do the extra cleaning that's required during the day. And then transition into the night to help the night guys who are doing the cleaning the desks. So they're gonna clean all the desks. They're gonna do a deeper clean in the bathrooms, the walls, the hallways, all of the touch points. You know, we're going to have more surfaces to clean, the plexiglass shields, the medical isolation rooms. So there is going to be. A significant amount more work. And just to give you some context to, um, the areas that we have in the buildings. There's roughly about sixty spaces in each building that the night custodians have to clean at night. Whether it be classrooms, offices, libraries, gymnasiums, hallways, you know, so that's a lot for two people generally. We're understaffed. And now when we're asking, you know, even more of our custodial staff to clean and deep clean these buildings and disinfect. Then we feel that the only way that we can properly do that and safely do that, um, is to, we do need additional staff. So I'm very happy that you answered that because I didn't want to forget to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. The only, the only thing that I think is important to note after speaking with Ms. Hebert is. This is one-time expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
And so you're talking about the custodians and I understand the custodians. But it's not something that can be exorped later in the budget. So it's something that's a temporary thing. If we fund it from CARES Act. Any and all, we're making this clear to all departments, any and all expenditures are a one-time expenditure because it is CARES Act money and it can't be exorped through the budget process. So I think that's just important to know because we were talking about.
No, I appreciate that. No, that's understandable.
So, um, we're, you know, we understand, I think, from my perspective, Ms. Flynn. I understand the, the majority of the expenses for the CARES Act money would come from the school department, um, seeing how you have such. It's not so much the staff. I think it's more so all the little kids that are children that are running around.
Well, on any given day.
It's so hard to do that.
Right, so.
In your phone book, say you have to supply for the digital learning thing. I mean, it's just.
It's been a lot.
Unfortunately, we can't just open the schools and say, we're opening the schools like we're back to normal.
No, it's not allowed.
Cause that's not the case, so.
No, it's not allowed and it's.
We're gonna, not, we're gonna have to do whatever we can to, um, help you manage to do this.
We appreciate that.
I think it's important for everybody to recognize how difficult it is, not so much. Not only so much for the staff and, and the children, it's for the parents, how they get back to work. They, they, with the kids being home now, they can't get back to work. I know I've heard a lot from a lot of different parents that have children is. It's terrible. It really is.
It's a, it's a very difficult puzzle to solve because once you solve one thing, now you've created a problem somewhere else. That's what we're finding, I think, right? Once we figure out what to do with one aspect, now we've got an issue somewhere else.
All the rules change.
And the rules do change. The rules are constantly changing, right? So.
All right.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just.
No?
I know, I'm just.
Kristen, it's great to see you again.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bailey and Sarah. You know, I think this is constructive on so many fronts is that, you know, the reality is the school department, it's half of the town's budget. It's, the majority of the population is impacted by COVID. So. You know, view this opportunity as an opportunity to build relationships where I'm here to help. I know the board is here to help. And that's what the, what the purpose of this, this meeting wasn't meant to be, an inquisition. It helps me sort of with my onboarding. And get a baseline of what's been done. So when we have to make, when I have to make a decision on CARES funding. I kind of know what's going on and I've, I've heard it from you. And, uh, you know, we'd like the opportunity to do this on a regular basis. I think the more we're in lockstep and the more we're communicating, you know, the, the residents better.
Right, anytime. We're more than happy to, um, get our information out so that people can understand. Um, and I think, you know, Kevin, you know, from when you were running for select when you came to see me and I was more than happy to talk about the school budget. So we are always ready to take our show on the road. We would rather answer questions directly than have people.
Confusion.
Confusion and make assumptions that, you know, may or may not be correct depending on the information they have.
We've always had an open-door policy, and I appreciate that because I've always considered myself to be the same, is have an open-door policy for anybody in the general public or employees to come in and speak and let me know what's going on, if there's questions or concerns, I'd rather answer them directly than then we get it from a third party and it'd be incorrect information, so...
Right.
To protect the integrity of the school committee and the school management and the administration, I think that's why we're going through this practice. So I guess I'll answer the MSB funding question, is that if we can transfer some of the costs from what you've already exorped from your end-of-year budget, maybe we could do a little bit of...
Are you talking about the reimbursement money that you'll be getting from that?
Yeah, if we did something on your previous fiscal year budget, and I know there's some concerns about the, that we're gonna address is the $110,000 for sewer pump station that we know we can't use anymore, so the reimbursement for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I know, I think that's another topic for another time, but, you know, I do, I was involved with that project with Mr. Noble, and I think that there's some confusion about that.
I'll be more than happy to talk to you on it because I know most about it.
Right, I think there's been some confusion on that, based on meetings that I've watched on TV, so I think that's...
I'll give you a call and we'll talk a little bit about that, we'll figure that out, but...
We're talking about the roof, right?
Right.
Well, we're talking about the sewer pump station, but that's a little bit different. But as far as the roof goes, it may free up some money, you can just...
Yeah, that's all, I was just saying, I think, Mr. Gassper, you're right on, like, as far as the roof goes, you know, the board's made a commitment that we wanna find the funding sources, and I was just thinking like how we put the puzzle together, the taxpayer, you know, going for debt exclusion should be our last option, you know, and because I think that just frees us up in the event that we have to really go to that route for something else.
So that leads me to the question that I wanted to ask you tonight. So when you get reimbursed, how is a reimbursement, Julie, for the care, for the money that you, the expenditures you submit? Is it dollar-for-dollar, is it a percentage, does it just go to the general fund? When you file for the CARES Act or for COVID?
For CARES, ah, this is, it's, it's been the most different grant that we've ever experienced. So, you know, you've applied for many grants. Just like with the stimulus package, where they got money out to people right away as part of CARES, they did the same thing with the municipalities. So in round one, you know, they said you have to, we had a deadline, we had to get all of our estimates. And when we filled out the application, I would call it like a soft application. They had various categories, and they just wanted, give us an estimate, and I know you guys remember this too, some were actual expenses and also an estimate through the end of the year, right? So $50,000 on this, sure, we'll plug that in under this category. And every category, under the CARES two, they looked at, some stuff would be covered by FEMA when we do apply for FEMA, and some stuff wouldn't be. So of all the different categories, some of them were reimbursed 25% by CARES, assuming that FEMA would cover the other 75, and some were reimbursed at 100% if they thought FEMA wouldn't, and now FEMA hasn't even happened yet. So again, you fill out the soft application, generically what things you have, they didn't ask for any backup. We plugged it all in with the estimates from all the departments, they sent the money back immediately. So Melissa, finance right now has been going through, okay, so what did you actually spend in talking to all the departments? And now going back and getting all the invoices, and they've recently sent out some direction saying, you need to file your application with all the detail by September 24th, I think. But we're, we're gonna give you the details as to how you do that. They still haven't even told us how we, how we file it, but that we have a deadline.
Right, we know how that goes, sure.
So Melissa's working really hard right now to get all of the invoices as backup, and plugging them all into the categories and doing the journal entries to move everything appropriately to that grant account.
She did mention something to me about, yeah, about that.
Yeah, so this is super helpful, this would be really helpful for her.
Oh, great.
Because again, some people, we've asked people to code everything COVID as they've spent it, but some people have...
Right, we've been writing that on our invoices as well.
Yeah, so she's, she's doing a lot right now to get organized and put everything in the right categories. So once she has that together, I'm assuming we'll have more guidance on how we actually submit the application, and then I'm assuming they would go back and say, "Okay, well, this is approved and this isn't."
And can I, I like to just add to that conversation because I, I know that this, the state has grants just for schools, roughly $202 million for reopening grants. So I think the expectation would be for the school administration to push as much as you can to go after those grants. And they also have another $25 million for remote technology essentials grants that's out there as well. So the school, I would, I would expect that school goes in and says, "Let's go after as much money there as well and apply for grants," and not just wait for the CARES Act money, just because everybody's gonna go after it, so let's go after whatever we can.
Right, now, I just need to explain something about that though, too. We have applied for the first CARES grant, which was roughly $77,000. I think around $13,000 of that we're required to share with the private schools in the town, so what actually comes into Acushnet public schools is less than that. So, and we also are aware of a reopening grant for Acushnet, which is $289,000, which we're in the process of applying for right now. So the way those grants work is you cannot spend any money until you have an approved start date. And you don't get your approved start date until you've submitted it. So some of the expenditures that I have on that sheet that we've already purchased, we have no other mechanism right now than to put them through, hopefully, the town's grant for reimbursement because this, we haven't been assigned a start date, okay?
Yeah.
So, so that, but we do already have the money planned for the $77,000 grant, and we're working on the $289. So if you see that we're spending the town's money before the school's money, so to speak, it's only because of that start date. If we had a start date, we probably would have written some of that into it. And the Department of Ed is very strict with that, that if you start, and you cannot, I even thought, well, maybe we can just relieve the local budget once we get approved for the grant. And it went so far in their, their grants management to say, "You cannot go back and charge expenses back to these grants." Okay, so that's imminent, yeah.
That's fine, but we're working in phases, like phase ones behind us, right? And we're gonna look at that, and we can do that, some reimbursements and the budget stuff and everything else. I'm just saying, moving forward, you have, let's just say, $300,000 in requests, you have a start date in place now. So you can go after, this, there's a lot of money in grants that you guys can actually go after. And if you can get that 300 grand, it just keeps money freed up on the side for further expenditures that are unforeseen because of how things are changing.
The temperature station, we would have put through the reopening grant, the $289,000. We don't have a start date yet, but we wanted to get those stations purchased and installed and working in the buildings before August 31st, which is when our staff returns. So at that point, that's not eligible for the, for the school grants, okay?
Do you have, you say you don't have a start date, do you?
Because when you apply for a grant, the start date is whenever you, they approve it, or the later of that date, or when they receive the standard contract form from the town, from the school department. Now, this happened to be the year that I believe, I think maybe you're more aware of this, with the standard contract, it needs to be renewed every 10 years, and this came about this year. So we have a new director of curriculum who was not aware of that, and I was managing the grants for the past several years, but I wasn't managing them 10 years ago, so I wasn't aware of that. So we got that standard contract form completed and signed and up to the Department of Ed. However, they want it to be received through regular US mail. So there's been some delay with that. So, but, we just heard back from our grants management person that they're going to be reviewing things tomorrow, and they should be back at us with a start date sometime very soon.
Okay.
And just to let you know, some of the other expenses that we're looking at, some things for outdoor classrooms, families who may choose to do full-time remote, we have to pay for licenses, that could be up to $1,000 per child. So we're definitely going to go through some money. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for having us tonight. One of the things that we formed in the town to make you aware is a COVID crisis response team, and we have Joe Correa on that, Chief Gallagher, myself, staff from the school, our school nurse. And we're meeting together as a team to sort of practice these scenarios of what we're going to do when this happens, what are we gonna do when this happens? And as a matter of fact, we have a Thursday morning panel with all administration. Joe Correa from the local Board of Health will be there, Chief Gallagher, and parents are invited to watch this. But, you know, it's, it's a real collaborative effort so that we can explain to people about the testing. You know, these are questions that people have, they can hear directly from Chief Gallagher on that. They can see that we are all working together in the town, and it's really nice. I feel very supported by the folks in town, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff, I mean, I think that's the end game, right? We're all working together.
Yes.
I, I, I think you'll, you'll find that you'll, you won't have a board more supportive of your efforts. And we want to be able to support, defend, sell it.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, put the W on the, put the wins for the, for the taxpayer and the residents and the kids, so...
I really appreciate that so much, thank you.
So, we're all tired of talking COVID-19, so we'll have an answer pretty soon from MSBA on the grant.
The, um, the board meeting is the 26th, yes, it's virtual. So in times past, we probably would go to the board meeting in Boston, but they said that it's virtual and not necessary. And, you know, I wasn't aware that we were talking about the roof tonight, so I apologize, I don't have my notes with me. But I think your question was some of this reimbursement money, if that would go back to support the roof expenditures. I don't think we have any expectation that we're getting any reimbursement money from what was spent already. I don't know if that's, if it's a general fund revenue or not, but we certainly don't have at this time any expectation. I mean, we, we purchased those items because we needed them.
Yeah.
And hopefully they can help you with getting some reimbursement in the future.
Okay.
What about the $50,000 for special ed stabilization, do you want to just mention that?
Sure, and one last thing, as Dr. Bailey mentioned, one of our expenditures that's not listed on here was transferring money into the special ed stabilization fund. The past few years, we've gone for a warrant article to transfer some money in the special ed stabilization fund. This year, coming into the end of the fiscal year, the, we met with the budget subcommittee, Dr. Bailey, myself, and Julie, and back on May 19th to talk about our, our budget and our funding. And that was one of the things that we had suggested, that we use some of the funds to transfer into the special ed stabilization fund. And so what that does is that puts money into the fund, I believe there's $150,000 in there now.
Yeah.
So those are for like extenuating special ed expenditures.
I remember we created that.
Right, right, so we knew that because of the situation, you know, with the warrant articles in the budget this year, that we weren't going to be asking for anything other than necessary capital expenditures. So we did have some revenue from extraordinary relief from circuit breaker, and that's when your costs far exceed one year to the next. So we had an unexpected costly placement that we were able to file for what they call extraordinary relief. And we were notified in May that we received about $138,000 for that. So we needed some of that to cover the cost of that placement because a year ago when we budgeted, we didn't have that placement. So that's the point of that revenue stream from the Department of Ed. So we wanted to take some of that and push it into the special ed stabilization fund.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You ever able to do that without town meeting, though?
I had to check it through, so I looked up the laws that establish the stabilization account and their rules for how it can be pulled out. It has to be voted of the school committee and the board of selectmen, but there were no rules about how it was put in. And I checked with DESE and they confirmed that it could be an article from town meeting, but it also can be a transfer voted by the school committee at the end of the year. They can't exceed, I think it's 1% of the total budget. So I, so I want to say it's about like $300,000, and with this 50, I think we're at 200 now.
I think so, I think you're right.
So they still have room to grow in there. And again, we've put money in, they haven't had to use it yet, which is great, so it's still there.
Correct, we had budgeted last fiscal year to balance the budget to take out $50,000, but because of other surpluses that we had, we didn't need to touch that. So we felt at the time, you know, it's like a savings account, leave it there until you really, really need it, so...
I think it was great that we created that special ed stabilization fund, just because of the unknowns that associated with it, the cost differences depending on the circumstances that you all know about, so thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you very much, goodnight.
Appreciate your time. If you make a new eye appointment, Doc...
We'll get back to them for CARES, I just want to confirm, so we'll look through what they gave us for CARES and we'll, we'll get back to them with what stuff should be...
I think it's important to look at what, what has, what they have expended from their previous budget for COVID, what we may be able to do some reimbursements on through that money. Look at the future expenses and then try to do a balancing and have a little more dialogue, whether I do it with Ms. Bailey and Ms. Flynn, or we do a joint meeting, Ms. Hebert. And we give the update to the board, I don't think it needs to be a big, long, formal thing. It was nice to get them in and have this discussion, but I think we can last do this and start figuring out the movement of the money and everything else to get them where they need to be, really, I think that's important.
I know they have the expenses from '20, and I'll have Melissa update everything and get that back to you so you can see where we are for '20. But I didn't know, again, for like the anticipated, if they're, how, how that would play out for you guys, if you wanted to vote on it or consider it.
We have time to vote at the next meeting, I think this is just a preview of what, what they need. And it'll give us more time to figure out where we've been and what they still need and what they're doing on their own with the grants.
We might have some better, I, better thoughts on how investment and repair is gonna cost at that point. And keep in mind that all of those expenditures were not in the budget, we're not in our local budget. So right now, we're expending them out of the local budget. And, you know, we may have some savings, right, because we may not have some costs such as substitute teachers, well, maybe, maybe not. We may have some transportation savings, at this point, we just don't know. But what we do know is those costs on that spreadsheet are coming out of our local school department budget, but they clearly had not been budgeted for because back in February, I don't think anybody thought we would be here like this today.
Excellent, one last observation I would just say, suggest, moving forward, to keep the lines of communication open that, you know, Julie, please make a point to talk with Dr. Bailey and Kristen, and Sarah, if you can take back to the school committee, the electeds, you know, as the elected members, to your folks, we're more than, I'm more than wel, welcome to, more than willing to speak with your folks, and saying that Chairman Gassper, Mr. DeRoche, view us as a resource for the school, for the elected folks.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anya, Sarah.
Goodnight, everyone.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent, and gentlemen, is soil permit cease and desist. We've had this for review, Ms. Leonard just handed out a paper copy, I think it's everything that we've all seen already in an email that was distributed by Ms. Hebert. I thought this would be something new. I think it's more formally just voting to endorse the Soil Enforcement Officers Cease and Desist, is there a motion?
So, who in all second?
All who's in favor?
Aye.
And we, we did receive a letter from Mr. Belanger, he is the Teams' Local Union Rep. And he writes, "As you are aware, I am principal officer of Teams' Local 59, as the business representative. For many of the workers employed at PJ Keating, Acushnet location in Teams' Local 59, PJ Keating has negotiated collective bargaining agreements since the early 1970s. I have recently informed that as a result of the cease and desist order issued on August 10, 2020, numerous employees, including all of my members, will be faced with losing their jobs. Given the current economic climate in the Acushnet area, such an unfortunate action will cause severe harm to my members and their coworkers. Teams' Local 59 has had a long, productive relationship with the town and PJ Keating for decades. I strongly urge both parties to take whatever steps that are necessary to amicably resolve the dispute as soon as possible. To that end, please consider this letter as my offer to assist the parties in whatever way possible to facilitate and expedite a resolution process." I, I would speak to that letter, Mr. Belanger, that this is no fault of town officials or the town, it is more so of the management team at PJ Keating for the disrespect, the disregard to our community and our town officials. I think it's in everybody's best interest to try to resolve this issue. Unfortunately, management has decided not to work with town of Acushnet or even contact the board of selectmen for conversation. So with that being said, we will do whatever we can to help. I, I think that it's important for the employees and their families to recognize that this is not something that the board of selectmen or town officials have forced on PJ Keating's management team. We don't want to see any harm done to any of the employees, it's no fault of their own that their management team is not doing their job and staying in compliance with their permits and/or soil board permit and the town's bylaws and haven't done so for many years. So with that said, gentlemen, I'll, I'll leave it open if anybody else wants to make a comment.
I couldn't have been said any better, Mr. Chairman, I think. It's not my intention to put anybody out of business, it's not a result of the cease and desist. The cease and desist is a result of the poor and sloppy conditions over there. And I'd be curious as to how many times PJ Keating has been in violation of the union contract, how many grievances have been filed. I'm sure there's probably a laundry list of that as well, so...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, this whole matter is about compliance as far as I'm concerned. And non-compliance via inquiry with state, federal, and local regulations. And noncompliance via inquiry with state, federal, and local regulations has just been shown. And now the consequences are being, being paid.
Motion to be made. Motion was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Heber, you have anything else to say?
I just wanted to add, under this bullet point, that PJ Keating files for an appeal of the order. And so I want to make sure that we talk about that as well.
Okay. So, they did, I guess we take a letter that was written back as a response to the cease and desist as an appeal. I mean, you can look at it a couple of different ways, but they would like to schedule a meeting, a joint meeting. I asked Ms. Heber to contact the Board of Health and Mr. Carrier and the board members if we could do it as a joint meeting instead of two separate meetings. So the Board of Health is good to go for Thursday, August 27th at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
And Mr. DeRoche, Mr. Monauer, are we at with those times?
That's very good.
Yep. We will ask, I'll ask Ms. Heber to make sure that we schedule a meeting. It will be a virtual meeting. We are working with cable committee members. Nicholas is kind of the point guy on that. He's the assistant town administrator, town accountant, but he is doing most of the technology stuff related to all our cable stuff and getting this up and running so that we have a great, great system in place. So we're gonna do a practice shoot of some Zoom public hearings, the virtual public hearings, and see where members will be able to call in, public calling in, plus you can, you can access via the computer because of the public hearing statute that the governor has put on. We're no more than 25 people in a, in a room. We are forced to do a virtual, so we will do a virtual meeting. Guess we could call it a public hearing, but it's an appeal from PJ Keating. We'll listen to what they have to say. We'll see how they plan on trying to resolve the issues of the noncompliance. It should be an interesting meeting. So the public is encouraged to join in. There will be a mute button that will be handled by the chairman of that meeting. We'll decide who that's going to be moving forward, but there'll be a mute button. So if you kind of talk off topic, if you are from the public and you talk off topic from what we're discussing, you'll be muted and you won't be allowed to talk. So just keep that in mind. If you have some important information you'd like to share with the Board of Selectmen slash Board of Health in this meeting, or PJ Keating's management has anything to say, keep it on topic or you will be muted and not allowed to speak. So that's how that's going to go on August 27th at 6:00 PM. And just make sure, we'll post that meeting online so everybody's aware of that once we have confirmation that we can actually pull this off. Sound good, gentlemen?
Very good.
All right. Cable surplus property. We've, we've, we've got a room full of old cameras and equipment and cables. And it's kind of overwhelming. This is, this is a list that was put together, I don't know, probably a year or two ago, by Mr. Lopes that used to run the cable, no longer with the cable. It's, it's basically, I've been in that cable room. It's a bunch of junk. We've been moving around from one location to another. I don't see it as having any value. I did speak with one of our cable members. He spoke with, or Nick spoke with. One of them spoke with Old Colony. They may be interested in some of the equipment, the electronic stuff to, for their, for their shop, for the students to practice on and take apart and put back together and see how things function and all that good stuff. So I guess we're just looking for a motion to declare surplus equipment worthless. And we can donate whatever we can to Old Colony. Let them pick through it. And after that, we'll scrap the rest.
Motion? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the chief talked to us, gentlemen, at the last meeting. Unfortunately, to the people that are listening tonight, we did not go out live because of the storm that we had. We're looking for a, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Accusative, Board of Selectmen, and the ASME Union Local League 51 to hire one of the dispatchers at step four because of his previous experience coming in. He goes on to say that the officers, they're both actually looking to become police officers. So, the memorandum of understanding for us to vote on tonight is to start him at a step four because of his experience level and his years of service. 2222 an hour. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chief has gone ahead and hired the other one. So we're all set with that to fill those two vacancies. The next order of business is park department capital purchase. Keep the audience to a minimum, gentlemen. I spoke with Chad McLaren. He's a park commissioner, great guy, does a lot of volunteer work out there. Has, has been doing it for a number of years. I talked to him about the mower purchase because of the partial season that he's got going on over there. They have some money in his budget. He's been spending a lot of money on, on the lawnmower repairs and things of that nature. And the mower, one of the, you know, the zero turn mowers that he has, it looks like it's a few thousand bucks to repair. He went out, did his due diligence, got us a bunch of quotes, submitted them through. He's actually got a very good quote here from Morrison's Power Equipment for a Pro-Turn 260 that he's looking for. He got a couple of them for a 160 and a 260. 260 is a better machine for not too much more money. I'm looking for a motion to approve a quote from Morrison's Power Equipment. And I wrote not to exceed $7,500, even though his quote is 69.75, so call it seven grand. I don't know, Ms. Heber, we pay sales tax on a piece of equipment?
No.
We will not pay sales tax. So a motion to approve the quote from Morrison's Power Equipment not to exceed 7,000 bucks just to make sure he's got a couple of bucks extra.
Mr. Chair, I just have to bring up the paperwork I have. Oh, okay. Very good. In the darkened area.
Ah, that's the problem.
Right.
Is this a double, is a 160 at the top, a 260 at the bottom, and it comes out to like, I don't know, 13, 13 grand? It's because it's two different mowers. It's very dark and gray, but it's broken out up there. It says 6,900.
75.20.
Correct. So not to exceed 7,000 bucks. I'll get him where he needs to be. I think that's a great deal. If you look at some of the other quotes, it's actually a thousand and $2,000 more. So is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Department of Public Works, sorry we're running a little late. We had a lot of COVID-19 and school talk and all that. That was important stuff for us to get out there, but I don't think it will be too long. You guys are pretty organized in the book as far as I can see. So, Mr. Manad, we'll just, I guess we'll talk about.
The projects or the solace Kathy's going to talk about?
Well, I, I probably know which ones they're going to talk, Kathy will talk about, because I know what she's been involved with because I've been in conversation with her. So you got, you got the first item on my agenda is a loan resale.
Okay.
You want to talk about loan resale?
Yeah, this was, you know, residents coming in and asking, oh, it's going to the recycling center. And every year we screen loan. We, you know, some, a lot of times you use most of it on projects. Lately, we've been screening a lot just because of the recycling, the, you know, the grass and the leaves and we're turning them over. So we're mixing that with the jobs we do and we're getting a, you know, a good product out there. So this year, we probably got a thousand yards sitting there, which we're not going to use. I think that would just be something good for the residents to, you know, if we can sell just to the, the local residents, you know? And maybe get some income coming in to maybe pay for some of those COVID-19 things, hopefully. So that was just a thing. And again, it was most residents asking about it and asking, you know, if they could buy it, you know? So that's where this came from.
Would you be looking to do something to, to keep it so that we, it's residents only and it's not, you know, contractors and things of that?
Yeah, I'd rather do that if that's.
So do you want to do like a one yard limit?
Like, like, the other thing would have to be, do you deliver it? Do people come in and grab it? Like a regular one ton dump, you can get like three yards on it. Like our big trucks hold 16, 18 yards. But that's another thing, you know? Would you want to get into any deliveries or anything? Or you want to, you know, but that would be more costly.
If it's user, if it's user, if it's user-based, right, as a resident?
Yep.
I'd love to take advantage of it, but I don't have a truck.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
If the residents will pay for it, then we can provide that service. I mean, I think that's a great deal for the town and for the residents.
What's the, what's the one? I probably wouldn't want to go with a big truck, just because what happens, whatever. Because the big trucks are heavy and somebody's driveway gets cracked or something. So a one ton dump, I would, you know, so a three yard.
Three yard max.
Probably be something.
And we only drop it in the driveway or a side yard. We're not going to use back yards with trucks.
Systems, you got to worry about.
There's liability issues there, insurance issues. So we got to keep ourselves in check with delivery.
Yep.
So I guess if, if, you know, I, I think I brought this up a couple of years ago to you about the, you know, the reclamation stuff from the asphalt.
Yep, correct.
Maybe selling some of that spurring the idea of the sale of the loom.
Yep.
I know that we do have that kind of material as well, so maybe we can branch out and, you know, when you line up streets and we got that, that stuff, a lot of people use it on their, you know, if they have a retreat lot for their road. So they'll be interested in doing that. If we end up with it, Dan, if you have a surplus, you can surely come in front of the board and say, yeah, I have a big pile of that. I can get rid of some and we can make a pot. Ms. Heber, how would we get that money to go back to DBW? Or would you just go back to DUG?
It'd be nice to be in the CMAS budget, because that's coming out like the screener. We rent a screener. So the cost, like the cost of screener is between $4,000 and $5,000 costs, but we get it for the week. And that's where you get the $1,000. So it's roughly $2 a yard just to rent that machine.
So you better, you can get it.
It would go to the general fund?
So, there's another way to do it. Can we create a revolving fund for the, for the recycling, CMAS budget?
I'd have to see it. You can only have a revolving fund for certain things. So let me check if it's, it's in allowable.
Oh, if we could do a revolving fund, like the library, council on aging, park department has revolving funds, things like that. So we have, we've created a few revolving funds for multiple departments. So maybe we'll, so for the rest of, until we go to another town meeting, if we have to have an article or something like that to, to establish the revolving fund for recycling. I'm all for it. I mean, I talked about this for the reclamation of the tower and stuff like that, to make sale of it, because I know we had some material and I know we had a lot of people that were interested in it. I know we don't get it all the time, but when we do have it, what the heck, right? Might as well sell it off for a discount to your, to your residents and try to help out your residents. So, you know, save them a little bit of money.
Yeah, what's a, what's a yard go for a loan?
If you purchase it, I'll, like, I'll, like I said, we don't, because we've been screening it and stuff. Again, that's up to the board.
Delivery delivery would probably $15 a yard. It's, it's out there between 15 and 20 dollars a yard.
You know, on the height, you're looking at bringing in 15,000 bucks for my, my, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like a worthwhile program.
As long as it doesn't cost more.
Yeah, oh, no, no, no. It's what you really said. It's not even, like I said, it's less than, you know.
Yeah, and obviously if we're going to deliver, it's going to be toward Accusative Residence. You can't say, hey, I'm an Accusative Resident and I want you to bring it to my mother's. I'll zone down.
Yep.
It's all, you know, you never know. You might get that. But, you know, do you want to add a delivery fee? Do you want to make that?
You could put probably 10 maybe picked up and 15 delivered, something like that.
I think that's, I think that's probably the best way to go about doing it, right? I mean, 10 bucks.
Yep.
I mean, people charge more money now. Like, if you order from the local nursery over here, it's way more than five bucks for a delivery fee. It's like 30 bucks for a delivery fee, right? So, I mean, you can go 10 bucks for a delivery. 10 bucks, you pick it up. 20 bucks, we deliver it. I don't know.
If we can provide something for our.
You know what? How about I check around and see what the actual.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we just see?
I'll ask a few local people and see what.
I mean, we, we want to do it as an in-kind gesture for the, for the residents.
See them a few bucks. And it's actually from our recycling anyways. A lot of it is composting and stuff.
Yeah.
And from the jobs we do every day, so.
Great. We'll look into it a little further for pricing.
I'll, I'll come to the.
Our next meeting is September 8th, so.
Okay, come to the board with some numbers.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Why don't you jump to Hamlet Street Bridge update, if you want to give us that?
Okay, that was, I'm sure you guys got all the pamphlet on that, where they were talking about the stone wall. And, you know, they were, the, the real question was like, if, if they had to, you know, if it's going to be taken down in the process, but if they have to restore it back to original, it'd be a holdup and it would be a permanent easement with, I believe it's, D. Roy owns that, right?
Mark Roy.
Mark Roy.
Grayland Call.
Yeah, Mark Roy owns that thing. And it would have to be a permanent easement. If we did not, something, because we own the wall, so we'd be able to take it down and not put it back. So their question was, do we, you know, I'm asking the board, is, did they want that wall rebuilt? And again, that's going to hold up the process.
In that wall, Dan, Dan and I, just, just so the board's aware of it, Mr. Manad was kind enough to meet me available last night after hours and we had a discussion about a few different things, but we were there. Because I was confused about this wall, historical wall, as they call it.
Right.
And he said it's right there. You can't even see it. It's like that grapevine stuff that's all grown over it. It's after a bridge. It's all overgrown stuff. You can't even see the stones anymore. And it, how long is it? What are we talking about?
It was like 100, 200.
100 feet, roughly. Of wall, but it's right after, so if you were coming from Main Street heading to Middle Road, it's on the right-hand side and it's right after the small bridge, because there's, there's multiple little bridges, older passes there. It's right on the right-hand side where the, where the big field starts. Mr. White's Field starts right there. I talked to Dan. I said, let's keep the stone, bring it to the town yard. We can use it perhaps for the Lake Street Improvement Committee down there at, at the Lake Street facility that we're doing the, you know, we brought in all those stones. We might be able to use a lot of those stones. I said, it would might be great for the Lake Street Improvement Committee to, to use those stones somewhere and do that. It's just a matter of whether or not the Board of Selectmen wants to have the state have that extra cost. And I told Dan, I don't, I don't see any reason to have that extra cost. And it's going to hold up the project and everything else. Let's just do it.
May I ask a?
Yeah, Mr. DeRoche.
Um, where are we with the easements? I know there were like six easements, four temporary, two permanent.
We got them all back. They were all donated. So that makes the whole process a lot easier.
Oh, okay. Because the last thing I heard was still too outstanding.
Yeah, so the attorney's getting all the information together to file paperwork into the registry. And that, that portion will be completed. And I know in February or March, the state will start looking at doing procurement and getting bids ready for the actual project, so.
Dan, you know, you know.
That's it.
You want to make, you want to, we'll just do, Julie, we'll just do a motion to not restore the wall? So it's official on tape?
Yep.
Is there a motion not to restore the wall?
Okay.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So that's, that's good enough. Dan, you want to go to the, the four projects you got here for DBW project proposals?
Yep. Again, I kind of, I came to, well, I didn't come to the board, but me and Mr. Gaspard talked about the other ones that we're originally going to try to do was the drainage on Mendel and the drainage on Hamlet Street, which, you know, through the funding, we kind of, we wanted to come back with a little smaller projects. So I chose a couple sidewalk jobs. One was on Slocum, one was on Niab, and I was, chose half of them. And the reason I chose them too, because we're also applying for a grant. Henry's applying for a grant to do a new sidewalk down at the bottom of, from Slocum to Riverview Park. And my feeling was if I started doing that, if we did get the grant and people see me running that where the sidewalks on Slocum and Niab, you know, need the repair, that we get the jump on it. So that was my thoughts in, in that.
So, Mr. Manad, the, for the board and Mr. DeRoche, you were part of this conversation. We have an article for our water infrastructure on Niab, which is right over here. It runs from Cabal Sub Salon over to Slocum Street. I'm sure that we're putting that article back on, because that's, that's water surplus. So we can get that water infrastructure. That water infrastructure is 125 years old. It needs to be replaced. Anything over 75 years old. So I looked at the sidewalk on one street, a Slocum Street, and I talked to Mr. Manad and I was like, does, does it make sense to do the sidewalk if we're going to do the water infrastructure? And actually, Niab is actually on there, on the so-called pavement management plan to pave. So I don't think he, I think you kind of said, no, it doesn't. If we're going to do the water infrastructure, let's not do this. We can just go in and do the whole road.
Correct.
Right? Get the water infrastructure out of the surplus from the water surplus account to do the water pipe, put a new pipe, pave, and do the sidewalks, right?
Correct.
That'd be a better plan?
Correct.
Moving forward on that?
In that distance is from Main Street to Slocum Street, that whole stretch?
I'm sorry? Yes, yes.
It's from Main to Slocum.
Right, yes. So water, we talking about?
It's from Main Street to Slocum.
Correct. The other side, is that still Ni? Or has that changed the name of the road on the other side of Slocum Street?
No, I don't think that one goes directly, does not go directly across. It doesn't.
Doesn't?
No, I think it's.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We'll look at it and just see.
Just see.
Karen, maybe you can put a little note for us to look at the other side of their go-kits or continuation to the other side. Because it would go over to Hope Street, right?
Correct.
And we'll just look at that and see where the age of that pipe is. Dan, I know you have a big schedule of all the old aged pipe on that.
Yep.
So I guess it's kind of hole off on the Ni sidewalk thing.
Okay.
If we, you know, we intend on doing water infrastructure here in the road, paving, you're going to do a complete road project there, right? Makes sense to do it all at once instead of on.
Agree?
Yep.
Yeah? And then the Slocum Street sidewalk, one side only. I kind of got this because of the small grant money that we're going to do from like the, we call it the water park there.
Correct.
Over to Slocum Street. But we had the board that talked about having intentions of doing both sidewalks on Slocum Street. You know, complete sidewalks, real, real deal sidewalks, not just a patch sidewalk.
Curving and stuff, yeah.
On one side, you can put curving because there's no pocket, so that'll be the board's discussion back then. But we've been, we've been pretty fortunate, actually. Senator Batikne's office put in, in the Transportation Bond Bill for the Town of Accusative, $700,000. You know, we talked about it. Mr. Monau was on the board after we did that. He put in a request for $700,000 for sidewalks and road improvements. So we're just waiting to see where the governor's going to be at approving that bond bill and what we will, if we will get some funding. I mean, I don't anticipate getting the full 700. If we do, awesome. If we don't, we get 300,000. I mean, I don't anticipate getting the full 700. If we do, awesome. If we don't, we get 300,000. I think at that point we can, we can make two brilliant new sidewalks on each side of the road and do them and do them right. And they'll be good to go for the next 20 years. You know, instead of, you know, a patch job sidewalk type thing and move forward with that. If not, if not.
Time frame on that and what they said?
It's been hanging around for a little while. We checked on it. It was bill number 2813 and I think it changed after that.
Yeah, and I followed up today so that the reps, um, associate wrote back to me and said, currently the bill remains in conference negotiations between the House and Senate. But the House also put in a similar version for Acushnet, funding source for Acushnet. So she said it should result in a positive outcome for the town once the final bill is enacted as soon as they learn more, shall we know?
So I guess, you know, that's a great opportunity as far as, Dan, to give you a lot more resources to move ahead and do a lot more paving.
Yep.
Um, we have the used paper. It's the reason why we bought it is to give you, you and your team to go ahead and go do big patches of road. Um, and take care of it. You did some really nice work. I think the last one you did, it came out, you did Sears Lane, didn't you?
Correct, yep.
Came out really good. I was out there today. I went and checked out Mason and Marion, which is on the list of things to do.
Yep.
And I went over to Sears and thought you did a great job over there. Those residents are real happy with that work, so.
We're still actually, we got to put some loan on the side. We didn't get to do that yet, but it's been so hard.
Compared to what it looked like. You guys did an awesome job, so, um, I commend you in those, in your work ethic with the, with the crew out there on that. So we're just going to hold off on the NIAE because that's a big project and I'd like to be able to do all of NIAE, everything all at once, right? It makes sense to go in there, just bang it all out at once. Um, get that taken care of. And if not, we'll address it, you know, in the upcoming budget year. Slocum Street, we're waiting to see what happens with that transportation money. Perhaps we can even use some of that transportation bond bill to do NIAE.
Yep.
The paving and the sidewalks as well. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So that'd be kind of a nice little loop around to do over there if we get that grant for the water park to smoke them.
Now, you looked at Marion and Mason, you said?
Yep, I went up.
That's another one. That was a chip seal rolled. Same thing with Sears Lane, which was chip sealed and it's really no mix on it. It's sort of like a half inch thing. So that's why I had to dig it all, same thing with Sears, I dig it all out. You're going to put two, you know, we put two and a half inches of by and an inch and a half of top. You know, it's going to last. And that's what we kind of did on Sears as well. So that's Mason and Marion.
That's both?
That's like, that's.
I know.
But that's, yeah. It's a short street, but it's in pretty bad shape, you know, so that's why. And that's something we can do in house. It's small. And again, I didn't.
Yeah, it's a side street.
And I know you want to do some paving this year, so that's kind of why I looked at.
So let me, let me ask you a question. I think that we still have available, I don't know, Ms. Hebert, if you have the numbers on here, or maybe Ms. Silver does if we. The last time I checked, that article from the previous year that we appropriated, the board appropriated for 200 to 250?
Yep.
For an article for road paving?
Yep.
I think we have like 75 left for balance in that article?
I think it's about 68,000. 68,000, I think, is the year end number I looked at.
So just call it 70, for the sake of discussion. So we could do Marion, we could do Marion and Mason street paving out of the article? We'll do that. I'd like to get rid of that article and clean that article up because it's already a year old and let's get that money. You've got, you, you're limited funds in your budget this year because of the budget reduction that you did, right? Um, it's only, do we, I think we only have 90 grand in road materials versus the 125 we've been doing for like the last decade. So we're underfunded. But it was because we asked for budget reduction, so no fault of yours. But if we could do Marion and Mason out of the article?
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
It's their fault.
Yep.
We'll kill the article money, right? So we'll fund it, Marion and Mason. Is there a motion to approve Marion and Mason street paving, Mr. Manat proposed?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we've got some Main Street patching stuff like you did. So you remember, Mr. Manat, when you're driving down Main Street right in front of Fire Station Number Two, you see that big swath? Mr. Manat actually did that as well with the paving machine. What is that, an eight-foot swath?
That's an eight-foot wide. That's what, that's as narrow as our paper can go is eight feet. It goes from eight to 12. There's that distance on that paper.
So the, so the.
So the one I propose here would be an eight-foot patch, correct. I mean, some of them don't really have to be, but we don't, I mean, we've rented, like we did the sidewalks actually around the soccer fields as well, and we rented a paper that went now, went to five foot, which that's an option. Um, we can rent the paper and, you know, it'd be less mix and less process and.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Might sound like a foolish question because I know we have a used paper, but it only goes down to eight foot. And I drove down Main Street and we've discussed that before. If we don't need the eight-foot swath because it almost takes you to the center of the road?
Yep.
Would you, if you have 1,800 bucks for a rental, for a sidewalk rental, and what's that, a four footer?
Uh, five.
Five footer? But does it move down? Or is five the smallest?
Yeah.
Five the smallest? Is that per a day? Is 1,800 bucks a day or a week?
No, that was a week, a week with that paper.
Do you think that the difference between the eight-foot swath then and the five-foot swath, is that difference in asphalt savings for that length of road? Do you think it would, would, would it be, would it be better to go with the rental and do a five-foot swath instead of the eight-foot swath? Or is that a wash and not worth doing the rental?
I'll do the math and I can, I'll figure out which one would be, you know, the best savings to us.
Well, you, just do what you need to do, Dan. I'm just bringing it up because it makes more sense because it's such a long stretch that you have proposed. There's one in front of the miniature golf place there.
Yep. Well, the thing is, well, if we were going to go for the sidewalks, that's why I was putting that paper as an option. Because then you probably, while we're renting it, we could do both at the same time. You're going to be able to do the sidewalks and go into.
Yeah, we talked last night though. We said we, you don't really need to do an eight-foot swath, but that's because we already have the machine that we purchased used, right?
Correct.
So I, I get it. But again, going back to the 1,800 bucks, does the cost of renting it offset in a bigger way the amount of asphalt, extra asphalt you're using? Because it's 55 bucks, 60 bucks a ton for asphalt?
$64 a pound a ton, you know, plus, yeah, I agree. And it's your three feet plot, you know, 800 feet long patches, you know, that's a lot of mix, so, yeah.
I don't do it every day like you. Do you know, I just know what the cost is per ton?
You know, it's not a use, but I definitely think it'd be a saving stone with the five foot.
Look, if it's, if it's a, if it's a big enough, if it's a big enough savings, I think it would be who was not to do it because then we could take the other 500 grand and go to patches somewhere else.
Correct, yep. Do some more patches, yep.
Right?
Yep.
And five foot is sufficient to solve the problem we have in Main Street?
Yes, because it's all on the edge. It's all on the side.
You know, when you're driving down the road, you fall into that because it's all busting apart. So, Dan, see, and that's where the water.
Isn't that almost where the guard rail is too? And that, or is that a little bit?
It's some, it's, some of it's near the driving range, where the driving range is, and some is a little bit near that corner.
They call it diggle curve?
Diggle curve, yeah. So that's a good section over there that needs some attention, you know.
Matt, we've gotten letters in the past from cyclists and from these cyclists and stuff that say it's a problem, you know what I mean? So I did write down, uh, one other thing that a couple of guys on motorcycles and I happen to notice, and I talked to you about the five, right around the 522 Middle Road is that manhole that's very dangerous.
Yep.
The metal's parked up out of the top, and if a bike hits that thing, man, they're going for a ride.
And it's, the other thing is plows. I got a ton of them. We actually, we're going to start doing it in the next few weeks. So again, it's the plows hitting things.
Yeah, can we, can we, can you get out there and do the manhole at 522? That, that's right around that, that curve on Middle Road. They come, those bikes come around there in groups. You know, we're going to lose somebody on that.
No, no, I looked at it after you told me about it.
Yeah, it's dangerous.
Because a lot of times, you know, you know, you lose blinders. There's so much things to do over there. So you don't catch anyone out there, so.
Right around 522. So 522 is on your right-hand side of your head and.
Where am I though? Am I like before the curb with the telephone pole?
No, it's before. It's about 300 or 400 feet before that telephone pole placement thing with the, you know, the solar farm thing.
Could we forget?
It's a couple, but it's on the other side. It's right, it's the middle of the road's here.
Yeah.
If you were coming back from the schools and you made that curve?
Okay.
You'll, that manhole's on that side and when the bike, you know, the guys coming around a corner with six, 10, 12 bikes and they ran groups, man. Some, one of them guys go to dodge it and the other, it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen. It's very unsafe, so. I've gotten a lot of complaints about it. I've seen it a few different times on my way back from the town garage recycle center and I said, geez, we need to do something with that before somebody gets hurt. So those are like little things that you can do, Dan, that, you know, take it upon yourself. You don't need the board's approval. You're going to have the little paving machine, whatever you can get away with. While you've got that little machine, if you have the money in that, that article?
Yep.
Um, this, that, that can also come from that article as well, right? We got the money. We got 38, 52. There you go. You're at 60 Gs right there.
Yep.
So you have like eight grand left over, maybe? You know what I mean? It depends if these cost estimates are exactly on it. You might be a little high. You might have extra money, so. You know, whatever you can get away with with using that article for right now, because I guess we cover these projects with the article money, let's, let's just, let's just expend that article and get rid of it.
Okay.
It's a, it's a year old. It's, you know, it's been hanging, right, Julie? It's been hanging around. We don't like to have articles. There's actually a law, right? Isn't there something after two years you can't?
No, articles can stay open.
For one, two years?
Incumbrances have to close out.
Oh, all right. So, but I mean, you don't want articles hanging around for two years. That makes her miserable for the town accountant, right? When you're putting in the expenditure to go, when was this article approved?
It can make her miserable.
Yeah, now that you're on it. All right, you know, anything else? Like I said, any little project you can get done, Dan? I mean, I got, I got a list of things. I'm sure the people in my neighborhood aren't going to be happy about me not mentioning. So I will for TV. Henry Drive, Henry Etta Drive, North Anthony Drive. There's three, there's six streets in my neighborhood. Three of them are garbage, worse condition than, or the same condition as Marion and Mason. So I know, I mean, if, if you could go over and take a look at it, because people are walking around with baby carriages and talking to me over my fence constantly and, you know, it's, it's true. It's just, it's, it's a hazard.
Again, them are the other ones that were chip sealed back in the day and it's only a half inch thick.
You know, I think it's, I think it's been in your mind and my mind, and I apologize to the residents, and we just can't do every road that's the crap because of a lot of them. But it's been in your and my mind because we, we know what's going on with the DPW infrastructure is sewer, right? We, we know that's a proposed area for sewer, so they're not going to go in and pave a road. And then you get away five years to dig it up. And the sewer's going here. But we can't just say that we're not paving roads because, hey, someday you might have sewer and we're not digging, it's a lot. You can't dig it up for five years, so. Um, I think if we do a little patchwork there and make people happier, there's something you can do. I mean, I know there's a ton of streets out there.
And maybe we do smaller sections of it or something like that.
There's a ton of streets that are out there in small neighborhoods that need to be replaced. So I don't want to diminish anyone's street. I know there's a lot of road paving that needs to be done. That's why I pushed for that quarter of a million bucks in road paving. And it's great that Senator Batigne, um, put in for that money for road paving and sidewalk repairs. So hopefully we'll start to make real progress in paving roads in the future.
Perfect. All right. I think our next up is Kat, right? You got the rest of this?
I think I got the ones that were important. I mean, I know you are involved with all of them, but Kat does some great work on, um, you know, talking and speaking anyway. Because you're out on the field doing what you have to with the guys. And thank you very much. All right, I'll let her speak for a little while.
I know. I'm exceeding my time limit on the meeting.
COVID-19.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kat.
So I'm going to go as quick as I can. First thing I need is a water sewer commissioner is I would like the approval from the board to include in the next water bill that will be mailed out approximately October 15th. A letter that you have seen to all the Acushnet residents about the fact that we had the recycling audit and we did not do well. So I wanted to explain to the residents what happened in that audit, and that's in the letter. And I also wanted to include the smart recycling guide that you have in front of you. It'll be nicer in color, so maybe they can put it in their refrigerator.
Hold on.
They can put it on their refrigerator because we do not want to put plastics in the recycling bin, please. 85, 90% of our contamination was due to that.
Motion to approve.
It's bad. It's bad. You know, I was driving down Main Street last Wednesday and that's recycling week last week, and 17 recycling barrels were open. 19 were open. Other 19, 17 had contamination on top that I could see right away.
When we just.
That makes me sad.
We just had to transfer $30,000 a month ago or a couple of months ago.
Yes, to cover.
To cover our overall class of hellasia.
Right. So if it's, um, okay with all of you, I'd like to include that with the water bill.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next thing on here is the, um, the water demand notice. We did not do a demand notice last quarter. It was not allowed by the governor. That has expired. The next demand notice should be mailed out next Monday, the bills were due yesterday. We have 25%. The income was not collected as of 8 o'clock this morning, and that ended up to be like 18% of the people. So then that's actually average. That's what I usually look at. So that's good. So, I mean, we're right on track to where we always are. And then I usually send the demands out. When I send the demands out, we usually end up with about, um, you know, about 40 people we tag. And then once we tag, once we tag them, we end up going to three or four houses to shut off water. That's how it usually goes. So, um, I'm assuming it's okay to go forward with the plan as usual.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I, I think under the governor's, um, you know, regulations that he's, he's passed, and it held us up before too from doing shut offs. I know that you're talking about demands. If we get as far as shut offs, that's still kind of looming that we're not supposed to shut off services for anyone.
Let's see what the, send the demands out, see what shakes out, and then we'll deal with what's left.
I'll be happy to come back and talk about that. But I'd like to send the demands out. Demands go out next week. Well, no, I do them next week. Then they have two weeks to pay. So you're talking three or four weeks before I come and talk to you.
I'm sure what you do to me and Ms. Silver that people will respond to it. I think some people might just be confused of all these mortgage forbiddenness and this, that, the other thing, and rent forbiddenness. And people say, oh, I don't have to pay my water bill. That's great. And they can't do anything about it, but that's not true, so. Um, we have a great, um, great turnout. I mean, we, a lot of people do pay, but some of them are just creepy flyers. They're like to be annoying, and so be it. Um, but for those of you that, we don't have shortfalls. So, set.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item is light item pickup that we had scheduled in May. That was canceled due to COVID-19. So I have in front of you dates that we were able to promote. We have to work with a few different vendors. I'm a mattress recycling vendor. We need to deal with CMAS and the TVs. Because that's where we think that most of the items will come from. So in order to do three Saturdays of the road, the best we could come up with was October 17th, the 24th, and the 31st. I spoke with the Board of Health and they said, we don't know what we don't know. So we may come back to you and say to you the day before again, you cannot do this. So.
I'm sorry.
The Board of Health can cancel it. They, they don't know. What Joe's saying is they don't know what they don't know. So if October comes and all of a sudden COVID-19 is horrible again, they are not going to let us do this again. And I, I don't want to do that to the residents again.
So, and I talked to Ms. Silver about this too, and I'll talk to Mr. Carrera about it and everything else. But, you know, when I look through that list, recycling is an essential service, so we have to kind of come to some common ground. And I'll gladly take the lead as chairman of the board to speak with Mr. Carrera or the chairman of the Board of Health on this issue. But we have to try to figure that out and get a balance of what's going on, right? That's been contentious in the past, but I, I would rather not at this point, being in mid-August, to try to even say a date. Let's just give it some time. I think all we need to do is give the public two weeks' notice.
Okay, just to remember that if you want us to mail out letters, there's only myself and Ann, and as wonderful and as amazing as she is.
We could do it, we could do it differently then. If it's going to be like this deadline thing and COVID-19 specific thing. We did it last time. That didn't work out. It backfired and the residents were really aggravated about that whole situation. I'm not going to try to put a blame game on it. I just think there was a communication breakdown, right? And I don't want that to happen, at least under my watch. So, you know, again, we'll, I think it would be in the board's best interest not to announce dates. And I think that when we're going to do it, we can post it online. Ms. Hebert can do that. Post it online. You can get it on All Things Acushnet. We can do a reverse 911. Um, the week, two weeks before, the week before, letting everybody know that this is the day if you're garbage, like we did last time, your garbage is on Monday. It's this Saturday. Your garbage is on Tuesday, Wednesday. It's this Saturday. So we got time.
Sign, get the sign.
Yeah, we got the, the lighting sign and everything else. And, you know, if we miss a couple of people, a couple of people call up, will you run out and go pick up this stuff and whatever? But it is what it is. I mean, we, you know, as far as mailing go and saying, I mean, I know, I understand it's stinky from your point because you're the ones sitting in the office answering the phone to crappy people if they call up complaining, but.
It's okay. I mean, I don't mind. I, I would rather wait and I agree with you than, than to rush and put dates out and then have to cancel again. You know, I don't want to do that to the residents.
We don't have a clue. I mean, we're doing really good in the Commonwealth with COVID-19, but that doesn't say in 30 days, we're not going to do good with COVID-19. So let's just.
We'll wait.
Motion to table.
Well, I'd just like to ask the question, what kind of lead time do you need?
If I do not have to do, if I do not have to do letters, I can, I can, everything you guys are asking me to do, I can do within 24 hours.
Yeah, I mean, but you have all the setup.
I am ready to go. I can go with everything else. I have the letter ready. I can do that. Within 24 hours, I can have it on the web. I mean, I can have the website so quickly. I can give it to Chief Gallagher. He'll do the 911 call. I've already been through it once.
But the DPW is on board and it's like short notice and CMAS is on board?
We'll hold the dates, the DPW.
We're going to keep those dates, Mr. DeRosa, but we're just not announcing them dates, right? The DPW, Dan and his crew, we've already put them on notice saying these are preliminary dates. We're shooting for these dates. And we're going to try to shoot it. But we're not going to announce any dates to the public because we don't know what's going on with COVID-19. When the time comes, we'll splat that thing on social media and the town's webpage and reverse 911s and the sign, the highway sign that we have out there, give a notification. We'll put it on Town Hall. Whatever the first Saturday is, we'll keep it on that side of town. The next Saturday, we'll put it on this side of town. We'll, we'll get it out there. People will know. people will know. People, once one person sees it, they go on the All Things Akushnet and say it's being done, I mean, we know our work last time, so let's just wait.
I agree.
All right, so we'll figure that out. Thank you.
Water and sewer rates. I only gave you each one page that was water and one page it was sewer. I have a lot of backups, so if you have questions on the numbers, I'd be happy to answer all of them. I'm going to give you the end of the story before the beginning. The end of the story is I have given you, if we have no increase, what would happen to surplus and if we have an increase, and I gave 2.5% because New Bedford increased their rates by 2.5%, the DPW is going to strongly suggest we do not increase rates this year and that's a lot because of the pandemic and COVID. You know, I mean, I think we failed for the residents, we didn't increase last year to both water and sewer.
That's right.
Could we, you know, without raising the rates and what I went back and did was, if you looked at my estimated expenses, they will not tie to the budget because the number we put in, and when I back was able to get the information at the end of the year, what we could do in the budget in February, we know a lot more information now. So I went back and said, okay, based on what we know now, a three-year average, this is what we will actually expect to be used in water and sewer. So I went back and actually backtracked and said, okay, what are we actually going to have to pay in benefit if we go on the average for three years? And the numbers are lower, so I'm not expecting us to use all of our budget this year. Worst case scenario, we do sell more and we use the budget while we took in more money. We're covering that with revenue. So I'm feeling, I'm feeling comfortable with these numbers and I'm also very conservative with my numbers. I'm saying if we don't increase rates, you're going to have 48,000 approximately in surplus in water next year and 38,000 in sewer and I'm, I'm being conservative. I'm always conservative as an accountant, I always go worst case scenario. So that's, that's the worst case scenario if, if I think you're adding more and that's without increasing your rates.
Gentlemen, she's giving you a history too. Did you give the history sheet of the city of New Bedford in yet? I think it's in here somewhere, I already looked at it.
Yes.
So we have a history sheet. Since the Board of Selectmen have taken control of the Board of Public Works in 2014, I believe that the town of Akushnet has done a phenomenal job in regulating the rates moving forward. And we have it at our rate increases. I think we've only raised the lower tier once from $5.60 since 2014 to $6 to the current date of 2020, so that's pretty phenomenal. I, I credit a lot of that, 2014 setting the rates and everything else, we knew what we were doing then. I credit a lot of that to the hard work that Dan and Ms. Silver put into their budgets and controlling their budgets and the expenses associated with their budgets, so we've been very fortunate on that, on behalf of the water and sewer uses. Sewer is a tough pill to swallow, the rate is high, but it's no increase and neither is water, so I would just simply make a motion to keep the rates even with last year, with her proposed 2021 sheet she's got here, broken out, same as last year.
Chairman, make the motion to freeze the rates and also, you're sending out the bills? You said you're going to send out bills sometime soon, is that right?
The next, well, I'm going to do the demand bills, so the next bill will go out on October 15th.
I'm just wondering, like when you put out, if there's a way we could just let the residents know that the Board of Selectmen today voted to freeze the rates for 2021.
I can put that right on the bill, I can put a note right on there.
I think that's important for people to understand.
Absolutely.
Very good.
I'll second.
Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think Lisa has, do you have that sheet they'll need to sign?
Yeah.
Thank you.